All right, gentlemen. We will open our morning workshop at the Kushtek County Board of Commissioners and start with the Public Works update. Go ahead.
Okay, we have one thing on your consent agenda. It's actually something from previously, it's to amend our resolution. Because we're not, we weren't gonna, we were a little bit premature and when we thought we would get to close East Road. And it won't be closed until September twentieth, so we need to amend that resolution. So that's what's, that's the only thing on your consent agenda for today.
All right, yours. On construction and we've got a pre-construction conference set for Thursday for the white plastic edge line contract. Curve warning signs and guidepost awaiting signed contracts back from our contractor, but we are working through a lot of paperwork and some metals now. Annual striping contract, the contract will be returning next week to begin the second phase of our yearly striping contract. On the design end, Pickleton area paving project, we had the last review of the plans through Wash Dot, we're just now waiting construction funding approval, so we go out to add. Sundale Old Highway Eight, we're in the middle of negotiations for right away, we've already acquired six of the fifteen acquisitions we need to make. Bridge repair bundles, those projects are still awaiting approval for our preliminary funding at Wash Dot. Small works guard rail contract for Canyon and Dot Road repairs is on ad bids are due tomorrow. We've already received a couple bids in the mail. And preliminary work continues, we'll be working through a crushing contract as well as our bridge replacement on Shrons Road, Snowden Road and Sunny Side Road projects. That's the highlights.
Okay, maintenance, we're still, both ends are still working up in Pickleton. Doing the reconstruction on that, that road. And working on some culverts on East Road, that's the east end, west end is also working on Pickleton Highway reconstruction and a couple of them are up finishing the last part of the SADIS. Fence that we had left off, so they could put the tower up. Facilities work, asphalt patching was complete, sidewalks are done, all concrete's done for the parking lots. Pioneer is the same place, jail roof is moving along, they're up there working, have been, they're moving right along. We got the, the grant agreement from the H A P, so we're in the process of reviewing it and then we'll be bringing it to the board for the Spiritport remodel. Events, nothing is scheduled until four H horse camp out at the fairgrounds. Let's see, it's the same thing, Flat Top, we are, we were scheduled to start today actually for the shelter, repairing the shelter and the fence out on Flat Top, but one of our people is sick, so. As soon as he gets back, we'll head over there.
What's our plan with the fence?
We're going to stretch the existing line and put it back, we beefed up the cross members. And we put new ties in instead of those cheap aluminum ties, we got stainless steel bands with a banding tool. We're gonna see how that weathers, if that weathers fine, then we'll come in and look at a different, I hadn't been up there.
With a steel crossbar and not an aluminum.
Yes, exactly, so we'll put a steel crossbar up. And then if we still have problems with the fence, people running it over, then we will like, we will extend the existing fence by welding. Another member up, so we can reduce the cost dramatically, I just hadn't been up there till I went up there the other day and looked at it, so. We, there's things we can do to cut, reduce costs. And SADIS Pass, that is, grounding is scheduled for October ninth to start, we're gonna meet. Jeff and I are gonna meet with D N R and the Fire District, they're gonna supply some covering, you gotta pick a date to get everybody. Takes a while to get everybody lined out to get the thing commissioned, so we needed to pick a date, we just said by October ninth, we'll start on the grounding. And D N R and Fire, your rural seven will provide. If it gets hot and dry, it'd be nice them, for them to be up there anyway. So the goal is that site will be online before Halloween. If everything falls, still stays on schedule. Cause we'll be commissioning it the last week, October. Okay, some follow-up issues, not too many. We received another waiver for the fairgrounds. This is from the Cub Scouts. They would like to hold meetings twice a week, twice a month, meetings there at the fairgrounds. And the exhibit building and have a, they have one event that they would do in the cafeteria. Total amount of money is nine hundred and twenty dollars, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars is what we would be waiving. I said first we would tie, I said, yeah, I like to bring this to the board, the Cub Scouts coming in and asking. We'll talk it over at the board, get their take first. And, you know, I said, as far as I'm concerned, I would like you to at least do some work, some prep work for the fair as part of the waiver. Cause again, that's true money and we have to pay people to go out, do that, if we're giving something up, it would be nice to get something in return. But again, that's the board's decision.
What'd they say when you asked them about?
They said they would be more than happy to prep for the fair. Said, you know, be stuff like cleaning grandstands, that kind of thing. They said, well, I just, I should, to me, I just can't bring it before the board, not say something. But again, that's board's choice.
Yeah, I mean, if they're, me anyway, if they're willing to, you know, prep for the fair and clean the grandstands, it, it will also teach them. Valuable lessons in mind.
Exactly.
So, yeah, no, I don't.
Your statement, if it's for the kids, you can't get any more kids than for the kids than Cub Scouts.
Yep.
Okay, so we, what we usually do is we figure out what nine hundred and twenty-five dollars is. And they do accordingly to the amount of that work. So it'll be like grandstand cleaning and some other things that we'll have to do. I could do some touch-up painting, that kind of thing, so, okay, we'll, we'll let them know that that's okay. I also gave you the landfill gas. Grant application, it's done. I can send electronic version over to Lisa if you would like.
And we only need two hundred.
We only need two hundred, the five hundred was actually, that was done years ago and it wasn't actually for the landfill gas. It was, the other fifty was for some other things. So it was actually, it's always has been four fifty, cause the old one, I believe, we commissioned Anderson was there, we were asking for two fifty and we were matching the two hundred. That's what the, and so I kept the same thing, it's only been a year or so.
So if, if they approve the two hundred, we can actually do this work next year.
Yes, that is correct.
If not, we don't do this work next year, right?
That's on you guys. Well, we, we only have to have one approval, because we have one vote here, I would, I would assume, I could be wrong.
Correct, yeah, fifty percent of the voter. Any issues?
Good luck having the conversation.
I'm looking forward to it.
All right. No, you gave me a hard time about last year's conversation, so now you do this.
And that is our thing, I was.
Who did you work with last year, couples? Is there a issue?
I think he's been the landfill gas person the entire time too.
Really? They don't, I thought it had to be their chairman.
I don't think so.
I might have to read the landfill gas contract and make sure they're abiding by their terms.
Well, they don't, on the contract.
The chairman of both boards.
Well, on the form, I thought that too, and then I, when I looked at the contract, it just says, it just says P U D Commissioner. Yeah, representative, it does not say.
A chairman.
Does not say chairman.
Or either one of us.
Nope, either one of us, but I think the board's always been the, this board's always been the chairman. But.
One representative appointed by the county and one representative of the district.
Interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're, I think Jake's right, it's always been gunkles as far as I know.
I have one other question.
Okay.
Which is off to your capital improvement plan.
Okay.
Well, and other. So we're doing the, covering the beer gardens at the fairgrounds, the capital improvement plan.
Yes.
We are doing the ADA grandstand seating with the non-capital.
Yes.
I thought you said we were doing handrails on the stairs too, or is that?
We are, that's part of that.
That's part of the ADA seating, part of it, okay.
Yes.
And then on the capital, it had land purchase for drainage improvements, is that that? Whatever, the sectioned out by the road, okay, got it, okay.
Yeah, cause.
Make sure I fully understood.
Now, the water right now, I mean, there's, it'll suit to purposes, one, that's a very tight corner coming around by where that south, just south of the exhibit building, it's very tight.
I just thought that was already handled.
Now, we, you know, we're going back and forth with Telford. But, and the other thing is, is the water always runs under the stinking exhibit building. It's not very good long-term, or it's been that way for a while, but it's not very good for the building. If we get a serious, one of those years where we get a serious like sub-zero for a week. Well, we could take the floor out of the exhibit building. Because it has so much water under it, if it froze hard enough. You know, but luckily we haven't had any of that stuff, if you got a sub-zero for a week where that, you got deep ground freeze, then you could pop that floor in the exhibit building. Cause that thing fills up with water, cause the water doesn't run, runs off the roof. And runs right back under the building, because the road is higher than the building. So what we would do is lower the road, raise it along the building, run everything off to that piece of property, put it in a ditch and run it out of there. That's what we call the drainage project.
Any other questions for these?
Nope, I don't have any.
Okay.
I don't either.
Thank you.
We're talking short-term rentals later.
Yep, we'll be here at two.
Perfect. Thank you, sirs.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna pause while we transition to go gray once all water max, right?
No update from the one that's on our?
Yep, I was just about to hand those out.
Oh, you do have an update. As always, something, thanks, sir.
Alrighty, next up on our list is an emergency management department update. Go ahead.
Morning.
Morning.
Always I'll start out, we have consent agenda, one item, that purchase authorization request. For the twenty-sixth grant operational communications project. The public safety radio system, right now, getting reports of missing audio. At this time, only binging White Salmon, Police Department officers have had this experience and reported it, so it is under investigation. Maintenance projects will include that, down at the very bottom, you can see in blue, I put in things that have changed since this is submitted on Thursday morning. For your reference. But that is, there was an original determination that we thought the console in the dispatch center, the radio console, that was, was the issue, was missing that audio for some reason, so dispatch wasn't hearing it. At this point, that original determination is in question again, so we're back to square one troubleshooting. What that could be, and I have both tier one and tier three now working on that, so we can get to the bottom of it as fast as possible. Yeah, just this morning, when I came in, dispatch said that they had an officer say that he had tried to call out to them twice or respond to them when they called out to him. And he didn't hear it, but I haven't got a report from that officer, so I don't know the details yet. The Juniper Point site, the generator malfunction is still under investigation. But it is highly likely that it is that switch and since it is not causing any true effects in our operational platform, then he's waiting to fit that into his schedule instead of make a regular or a special trip. To repair that switch. The click of that site generator failure is still being looked at by Public Works and is still believed to be a supply line volume issue. Rick with Public Works is, is handling that for us. The, I was contacted by Yakima Fire District Five last week and they are in the stages, they've turned it over to their I T person for their radio system. And we're in the process of making the final transfer of equipment from them to us for all that surplus items that will prolong the life of our system. Greatly. Flat Top Security Fence and Shelter, you heard from Public Works this morning, that was scheduled to start today, I talked to Rick this morning, he's still hoping it will start this week sometime.
Question on that, so the actual repair costs are in your budget and you, they're just gonna bill you kind of thing to fund that work, right?
That's what the board directed us to do so far, yes, and that supplemental that you approved, approved just a week ago or so. Included that, Public Works estimate for both the fence and the exterior wall at Flat Top. The annual tier three radio site inspection report was received on thirty-first and I opened it. And I still have to get, dig into it, I was happy to see that there were no immediate needs identified, no high-risk items identified in that report this year. The tier one report is still, or the tier one P M's are still ongoing and that report is expected later this month, right now, Daywild's priority is SADIS Pass, equipment installations for us. As well as these other issues that have come up and now they're working on spontaneous failures and so on. The Pickleton site microwave receive failure is one of those and I again have tier one and tier three looking into that. It is just on the receive side of the Pickleton Microwave Radio, which is highly unusual, so. Usually if a radio is failing, it fails both on the receive and the transmit side and it's not just cause there's redundancy there, there's two microwave radios, A and B, so one has an issue, fails over to the other one. And they're both reporting that failure, so it's not in the radio itself, it's somewhere leading into that receive side of that system. So, experts are looking into that. The cellular service is on hold, we'll talk more about the Diamond Gap site later on. Senior Services got their mobile radios and mobiles installed for base stations at each one of their offices. They're now fully operational on the radio system using the road channel, sharing it with Public Works. And they are reporting much better service than they got from the system they were using prior. It's just like every other emergency responder in our county, they can, they can talk almost everywhere, where before they couldn't, they didn't have service in Glenwood and those areas where the commercial service didn't reach off the Columbia River Corridor. So they're pretty happy. Radio site lease agreements, the P U D is still in conversations with us about expanding their system. After the Newell Road Fire, just like the winter storm of two years ago, I think it was, when their system gets compromised and they don't have good coverage. It pushes the button to say, we need to upgrade our system to be more like the county system. And so we're talking about the possibility of adding them to our simulcast in its entirety. If they're willing to make that investment, but those are ongoing conversations. We also received verbal requests from Estamb broadband for equipment upgrades at Flat Top. And gave them direction on how to submit that request in writing. The public safety radio project, sorry, anything, any questions on any of that? Okay, the radio project, as you heard from Public Works, we're continuing to work with consultants, I'm working with our tier three support provider. To make sure all the proper plans are in place for commissioning and cutover. Also, I am working on our internal cutover plan for dispatch and all the field users. How we take one channel out of our system offline every time, one at a time throughout a whole day. And transition the users of that channel onto a different channel and then back again. Very detailed plan that needs to be done right, or somebody misses radio traffic. Isn't paged and so on. I did move the trailer repeater up to the new SADIS Pass site. A few weeks back for improved coverage, further mitigate the gaps out there. That was an adventure, took me six hours instead of the two I thought it was going to, but it is there. And the performance from it up there versus down at the pass level where it has been for the last I believe five years is, is better, so.
We ever had that vandalized or shot at or any of that kind of stuff?
Vandalized, yes, not shot at. It, it's been parked in a semi-secure location up until I moved in. And where it is now, there's no vehicle access, so they'd have to walk in to get to that. Any questions about that? Oh, actually, I think I had one more thing. Yes, the cutover and welding, as Public Works mentioned, I've just this morning scheduled another meeting between myself, Public Works, D N R and Rural Seven to discuss mitigating the welding for the ground system up there. Due to fire conditions. So we scheduled that meeting for tomorrow morning now. Now that the D N R has lowered their F P L to two last week. We determined that could move forward, we felt comfortable if the D N R and Rural Seven would provide fire apparatus as a mitigation effort on scene manned while they're doing that welding. And we'll go ahead and do that and start that on October ninth, the week of October ninth. And it should take five to seven days, they said, so then we're planning on on starting that commissioning process and do the actual cutover on October twenty-fifth. So, very much looking forward to that. Okay. Nine-one-one call taking and Public Safety Radio Dispatching Phil.
Good morning, so just update on staffing, we have two communications officers continuing on training. We're actually, yesterday I met with both of their trainers and we are making plans for end of training, although that's not happening until, until around December, but we're looking forward to that and planning the things that they need certifications and ensuring that we got everything in place for that, so it's looking good. And you might hear them on the radios there, a lot on the radio now, so we're reaching a midpoint training. Section. Still participating in the state nine-one-one dispatch training standardization, there's been some staffing issues, so that's still going with the state, hasn't moved forward since last update. Medical certifications, we're still working on that, it's, it's gonna be an ongoing issue, so you'll see it for a while there. Not an issue, but it's just an ongoing project and keeping certifications and just moving forward to be the best that we can be on that aspect. Text to nine-one-one, we enabled two additional cell phone carriers, so we now have U S L, Verizon and A T and T, still need to work with other cell phone carriers, it's a little difficult because you need to have one of those cell phones in order to test the nine-one-one. And it has to be within the county, so these ones were easy to track, the other ones, not so much, and there's quite a few companies that I've never heard of, but they're on the list that has to be. So with that in place though, we have received two texts to nine-one-ones. In the county here, I believe just a couple of weeks ago was one of them and it was a domestic situation in which the family member was able to text. Give the details and I believe that it kept the situation from escalating when deputies arrive. Things have calmed down, where typically when somebody sees the other person on the phone, they get a little more excited, so that's working well. Cross-discipline training task force, we're still looking for participants from all the other agencies, however, we have moved forward with reaching out to different agencies one-on-one, we recently completed active assailant training with Deputy Corney with the Sheriff's Office, he's been going around providing training to schools and other organizations. And so we felt that having that mutual training with him, seeing what he's teaching helps us do our job that much better, so. We completed that. The other new issue there on, on your list is we did have a nine-one-one cellphone outage in the Glenwood area, the initial call came in about four-thirty in the morning on Sunday. Reporting that the Glenwood phone systems were down. We did page out for the Fire District to staff their station in case any emergencies would come in. Especially in Glenwood where there is no cell phone coverage in most of the community, so. My understanding that the Fire Chief was there, I know most of Sunday and part of Monday. In case somebody came in, we got the call last night about eight-thirty, that they finally got that service restored.
Do we know what was wrong? Cause there was no power there Sunday at four-thirty A M, cause the power went off about ten forty-five and didn't come back on till ten in the morning, so.
Almost eleven o'clock, yeah.
Yeah.
On Sunday morning, yeah, it was, it's one thing I didn't put in my radio system report, that was an extended P U D outage caused by B P A work and, yeah, I was scheduled to go from midnight to eight A M and it actually went for almost eleven and a half hours, according to my alarms.
Yeah, and I, I know that, well, and the recordings that we get, that's a recording call that we get. It said that they just had the tech respond and reset the switch. So it might have been that it went down, doesn't have redundancy yet, I don't know on the power situation. And it just needed to reset, I know that on Sunday evening, we had the Fire Chief make some test calls just to, you know, we've had it where other times they report an issue, but the phones are still working. On Sunday evening, they were not. And that evening, I got a call saying that they were rescheduling the service tech until Monday, so.
So was all phone lines out or just nine-one-one?
That's, well, we only tested calling to nine-one-one, so I, I do not know if.
But there was no.
Yeah, I would believe it was all Lumen phone service, if you have any local knowledge. Yeah, I would believe it was all Lumen phone service, if you have any local knowledge. Yeah, they lose their whole system.
So have we talked to Lumen about A their backup generator, B their their batteries, cause if their batteries only lasted till four thirty and we got winter coming?
I've talked to them many times over the last nine years that I've been here and um. I've always been stonewalled because they're. Yeah, they they, this is a known issue, the Glenwood Valley has more. Phone service interruptions than any community in our county, uh, Bickleton is second and um. My impression is that. It's not enough of a problem for them to uh make any more investment. Right, I, yep, it would take more muscle than I have to convince them otherwise. At this point. Yeah, I I I think it was last year, the year before, I gave you a full report on these phone service outages, it has improved since then. Um, and I don't know if they made any upgrades, but it used to be that almost every time we had a heavy rain in the Glenwood Valley. There was um moisture um that got into their system and their switch somewhere or a ground fault. And would kill their phone service. And that was just a known thing by people in the community. As well as the phone company.
Is that fiber fed now out there?
I don't know.
Yeah, I can't remember that, yeah.
If I remember right, it's still on old phone lines.
I think it's still copper.
Yeah, so um, but we do have to thank the Glenwood Fire Department for. Again, their volunteers, just like everybody else, and they do respond to those in the middle of the night when we page it out. To have somebody sitting there just in case and um, you know, that. The situation is that if somebody has a medical emergency or any kind of emergency, they. Would be able to go to the fire hall, the problem would be for anybody that could not. Get out, you know, like you fall in and you can't get out, you can't be expected to go to the fire hall for help. Um, and obviously there is no. Cell phone coverage there unless you stand, I think, at one of the stores. You know, so um, but yeah. And then moving on, um. The CECO grant, so I I will take this one, uh. There was some miscommunication and my misunderstanding that the excise tax would be subtracted from the nine one one brand. So there is two excise tax, emergency communications will not, the nine one one excise tax. Is different and that does so, um. Jeff found out that Lewis County has this in uh on the ballot, it's coming up for November, so and that will not affect. The excise tax or the grant.
So how much are we talking of that one, is that the eight hundred?
So according to the treasurer, a few years ago. The revenue that we could expect to realize from one tenth would be three hundred thousand a year roughly. And two tenths, of course, six hundred thousand, and those are our choices, we can do one tenth or two tenths. Uh, that two tenths is the maximum allowed by RCW. And so, yeah, since we found out, got a final answer. That the uh nine one one grant from the state wouldn't be reduced by the amount. Of revenue from the emergency communications excise tax. We've been looking into that further and um have discovered that a majority of the counties. Have taken either one tenth or two tenths and several of them have done the two tenths right now, um, Lewis County. Has it prepared and on there to go to their ballot in November for the full two tenths. So that is a recent thing and something we're looking into to make sure that. How they did it, what they did, lessons learned. All the way through, cause well, like I said, that's a year and a half to two year process. To get that on the ballot and then actually hitting. Uh, the revenue stream. So um, just looking for direction, if you want us to continue. Look into that and provide you with more detailed proposal. But I mean, those, that's, I don't know how much more I could give you without getting into the very specifics of. How we get it on the ballot and what the best practice has been for advertising, promoting it within the communities, but. There are some. Stipulations in the RCW about um having. Everybody that uses those emergency communications as part of a uh committee. An advisory committee to this board that I would manage. Um, and those things we're looking into exactly. Some of those requirements are based on the size of the entity, so poply population. If you're smaller, you don't have to do certain things. Cities, I think it's cities or counties over fifty thousand have certain rules and under have others and so on, so. I'll, I'll do what.
What direction are you inclined, are you inclined to go this direction, are you more inclined to go for uh? You know, a public safety levy that's compared multiple.
Uh, I think we need to um. Run the numbers. Get a more thorough understanding of what are available. Well, this way we already know it's six hundred, but we don't know what the other one would look like. What its number would be unless you had somebody run it, you know, but that. For me, I don't.
It depends on where you set it and what you set your bounds and how that would look, but. Um, I mean, this by itself is eighteen month process before you start getting the funding. You've got one more year burning through fund balance. So the time to start having this discussion is probably not. I wouldn't wanna do both. To me, it would be an either or, third point.
Um, the, I would say yes and no, but that would, that answer to me would depend on. What the other number is. And I don't know what the other number is. So I'd hate to make a decision. Without knowing all the.
You can just look at um. What we bring in in property tax and you can make assumptions on a levy based on how much. We, I would say let's figure out what for the next three years or so, what we're gonna need. Like how big the budget deficit is gonna be and, you know, sheriff and all that. And then we can start making those assumptions working backwards from there.
Um, why don't we throw an ad on the Thursday's workshop? If Jen's gonna be available anyway. And um. Adviser.
Might be a little early. You might need to give it more time.
I'm just saying, just to give her a start of. What to look at to be able to give us the correct number.
I think actually she has done some some longer range planning.
Well, she may, she may have some information and maybe we're just giving her guidance on what to go look at, but then we'll know more. Uh, to be able to make a more educated decision anyway.
So I'll wait until further instructed.
Yeah.
Okay.
But do keep up on, no matter what, keep watching how Lewis County is doing it, what their marketing looks like, all that.
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. You have anything else to add on here, um, Joe? And of course, I put that under nine one, it's not a nine one grant, but we needed to reach out to those folks first to find out. The any impacts to that grant, um, but this would be for all emergency communications, but not nine one call taking. Um, so moving on to the emergency management program, um, we have had. A few wildfires since we last reported, none of any significance, and I know if anybody was affected. That might sound harsh, but in the scope of things, um, most of these fires like Lisle Point and Garrison Road were, you know, less than an acre. Uh, or in the. Five acre range, the one in Tidymon Road and Highway eighty seven, um. Burned up a bunch of grass out there between Tidymon and one ninety seven and came close to the um RV park and so on. But still wasn't of anything significant, no structures lost.
Do we know any causes for any of these?
I do not. Um, the. So right, the same day I turned in my report on Thursday, the seventh. Um, had a fire that was reported as a smoke investigation, we could actually see the smoke from emergency management out the window. Um. And the caller was some distance away reporting it, so it went out as a smoke investigation in the blockhouse area. Um, Cunliffe Road, it ended up being on West Winterstein Road uh across from two five zero. And when they got on scene, they were able to keep it under an acre. You know, field stubble or grass, so the uh, the point there is that. The fire conditions have stabilized to a point where those starts. Don't get a real pick up and go with the fuel moistures, we've had a lot of. Relative humidity recover overnight, it's been in the fifty percentile overnight for several nights now. So that is a very good thing, and we're all kind of taking a breath, but keeping in mind that um. The first two weeks of September have produced the largest wildfires that have been the most destructive in our county in the past. Both in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and fifteen. Um.
Either one of those were lightning.
No, um. The monastery fire was a semi truck with um. Uh, failing catalytic converter puking out big pieces of charcoal out the stacks, so what started that? Yeah.
Did you ever track that? I mean, I'm sure that semi trucks halfway to Idaho.
Witnesses calling it in as they were moving down the highway. Yep, they had eyewitnesses.
You ever track the actual rig?
I don't know where the investigation went from there, um, I was kind of overwhelmed with that whole process. I was involved in the response.
Cause I'd be curious if if you actually got a, if they ever got a license plate number and can track it to a trucking.
It would be.
Company to resubmit the bill to the trucking company essentially, and I wonder if that is.
I would have to ask Chief Browning about that, that would be on his fire district. And what they were able to follow up on and actually prove. Yep, to do cost recovery, the fire district as well as the DNR when it got that big.
Interesting. I do appreciate the new burn ban, cause I just got to thinking about it today, I haven't received a whole bunch of waivers this year. For ceremonies and bonfires and all sorts of things, so that's.
Yes, and uh farther down here, I am gonna start pinging the fire chiefs by zone. Um, to see when we wanna do that release, because as you, if you remember, there's, there's no end date in our new burn ban. Uh, resolution, so we have to make a decision as when we're going to discontinue those, release those burn bans. And I'll be coordinating that, like I said, with the fire chiefs and advising you on our recommendations. Um. Let's see, newer road fire recovery activities are ongoing, will be for months or years. Um, still working with the assessor on that side of things, we forwarded um. Information about donations, one specifically was a donation of hay out of Oregon, um. So that we, you know, didn't. Get caught up in what they had going on and who needed it and, you know. It's not for us to say who needs it and who to give it to, there wasn't enough, you know, to spread around, so um. I had the idea to involve the Cattlemen's Association and I called our local Cattlemen's Association president, who I know well, and. He was willing to take that football, Dan Lee. And um. Take that football and and figure out how to best handle that donation and how to disperse it and so on. So that the county doesn't have to deal with any of those logistics. Let alone some matrix of who gets it and who doesn't. Um, met with the building department. Last week about the Wildland Urban Interface, uh, WUI code project briefly. Uh, just the opening discussions of what that might look like. Now that the state has put off their uh code. Until sometime in November, I believe it was supposed to take effect, that building code. And July thirty first, I believe, and they postponed it until sometime in November now. Uh, we'll see where that goes, but she wanted to include me in that, um. So Frank and I will be working with her on our recommendations and at a certain point that it becomes. Um, relevant, get the fire chiefs. Input on that and have them involved as the subject matter experts. For Wildland Urban Interface, um, but that code will be significant, in my opinion. Um. The DNR wildfire detection camera project, um, they. Are in the process of working with Astound, I facilitated the connections between the DNR. And Astound broadband who manages the site that uh Astound, the county and. PUD are all share a diamond gap, uh, Astound has the responsibility to manage the site itself and the facilities, so.
They're just putting up like a three sixty camera for like build fire watch towers that used to be staffed and they're gonna be sitting in some room somewhere looking at smoke.
Um. Yes and no, so there's two cameras, one on each side of the tower, and they each have a one eighty view, so to provide a three sixty view. They are artificial intelligence uh software, it's really what this company sells, they've approached me. Uh, I think it's like fifty some thousand dollars a year per site, uh, service fee, they, they really provide. Uh, a service and a software for that artificial intelligence to detect wildfire on video images. But to do that, they come out and put up the cameras and install the whole system so that then they can sell you that service. Um, knowing that we don't have fifty thousand dollars a year to pay for a service that we would need multiple. Cameras for multiple sites, um. I hadn't looked in it further, but evidently the DNR is, I don't know how many total sites, uh, twenty one actually. Twenty one sites across the state, they've chosen uh Diamond Gap as one of them and they're in the process of getting that installed. What will happen is when that camera, one of those cameras picks up something that it believes is a wildfire smoke plume. Then it sends an automatic alert through the software system to their control center where they have live people that will then verify that. Um, detection and then pass that on to the responsible nine one one center for response.
Where is Diamond Gap located again?
South of the Glenwood Valley, um. It's upper Snowden, Ember Valley, so north of Snowden, south of Glen.
And you can see most upper Snowden, the whole Glenwood Valley up to the.
Yeah.
Mountain from the, a lot of, a lot of Yakima County.
The camera that we have there for security right now is down low, you can't see out of the trees. But these cameras will be atop of tower and will have a commanding view half of the county. Except for in the canyons, but that's the challenge and along the river.
But you'll see the smoke coming out of the canyon.
Yeah, eventually. Uh, by then we'll probably get to nine one calls, but this will be best for those areas, you know, Simco's, Grayback, out. Um, along the Clickatad, the upper Clickatad River, north of Glenwood. But yeah, a lot of the stuff we get calls really quickly on, so. We'll see how it works out, but we're excited and I am pushing them. The company and the DNR to allow us to have access to those cameras, so that they provide that, the, the company that provides a service is Pano AI. Um. And sometimes it's like a public utility district that puts in all these cameras and then just gives access to the responders or their dispatch centers. Um, to monitor and look at as well as the service to update it, but um, yeah. It, it would be not only for the initial detection and notification, but also to be able to. Locate that smoke or fire and get responders there in a more efficient way than just. Somewhere north of Diamond Gap or, you know. You know, that actual, you need at least two, if not three locations. That can see the same point to triangulate. So just one. System in our county won't be able to triangulate multiple cameras and get a GPS coordinate. So that responders could then go there more efficiently. Right now they have to try this road, then that road. See what they can get. When we get those smoke investigations. But it is exciting, happy to see what the possibilities. Also not on the list. Frank and I attended under the wildfire. Bullet Frank and I attended the city council meeting for Goldendale last Tuesday evening. Gave them a presentation, just briefly on what their emergency management department does for them and. The nine one call taking and so on, but then talked. More specifically about wildfires and wildfires affecting communities, cities and so on. And what they should be considering in the way of. Educating the public and possible mitigation efforts, fire breaks and so on. Unfortunately, the D N R representative wasn't available. But I think it was well received. The city fire chief, myself and Frank all gave a presentation and. It was very timely because they lost what over three hundred and sixty homes. In Spokane County, parts of Bend or Lee County in the recent fires. And those are homes, not just structures, but homes.
Three hundred and sixty?
Yeah, there was, I didn't make sure I've got this right. Just homes, three hundred and fifty six. Homes alone, a total of just under twenty one thousand acres. That on top of our Newell Road Fire, which was sixty thousand acres and we had. Multiple structures damaged and some homes that were unlivable. And then the Maui Fires and all that.
What was the cause of that Spokane fire, do you know yet?
I haven't heard anybody say. And.
I heard something about. Lot of brush under a train trussel, like they were thinking it was a spark off a train.
I know that, 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 I think that was a different fire. Chief Long. Was on state mode for a fire that burned up a train trussel and is gonna cause all kinds of havoc. And he was Ops Chief or I C or something for that fire and he sent me an email, I think with a photo of it. That one trussel being out of commission is, is gonna cost millions, millions of dollars to truck the grain. Instead of put it on rail for that area. All the grain that they're trying to harvest and get out of there. It's gonna, that's a big deal for that one trussel. Like you said, that the vegetation management wasn't done. So that it would keep that trussel from being burned. So. But yeah, that, it was very timely because they had all that in the back of their mind. I, I pointed that out and. We'll see where it goes, but it was a good opportunity and we're happy to be invited. By a certain city councilman that will be unnamed. But it's good to get in front of those kind of folks and, you know, just keep giving them a reminder that this is out here and. Just because you live in an urban environment doesn't mean that you can't be affected by wildfire. Not wanting to scare anybody, but that's the reality we live in. And there are things you can do to mitigate it. Next up is the school safety meetings. Are we going overtime? I don't know how much time I've got. School safety meetings resumed August fourteenth. Phil, do you want to talk about some of this? He's been involved with Stop the Bleed training and so on.
Yeah, so we're trying to facilitate as much as we can for the schools and again, not. Using scare cast tactics, but the reality of things. So we were able to collaborate with. The schools, the sheriff's office again, Deputy Ben Corning has been providing training to those schools. On different levels, so. Between a connection with him and a connection with the EMS council for the county. We were able to provide and set up training for Stop the Bleed. So. Sorry, lost my place here. So we were able to provide training at the Bickleton Fire District. We were scheduled to go to their school, however, we had to postpone that. So instead. We provided training to this fire district so that they are able to provide. The training themselves and their community and hopefully beyond the school. The EMS council has used a grant to obtain Stop the Bleed kits. And while it's not enough to supply multiple at every facility, it's enough to start and show what you need. In form of tourniquets and costs and things like that. The Golden Dell School District had done this last year through the FFA, obtaining donations and getting. Put together kit for every classroom. I know in the middle school and partially in the high school for any type of event that may happen there. So we have Glenwood Schools scheduled for October and Wishram Schools scheduled and again. We're trying to coordinate so that rather than a few of us going out to train. These people, we can do that and train the fire districts or other volunteers in their community. That they can spread that training beyond the schools.
Train the trainer.
Train the trainer, yeah. Take that beyond the schools into different job sites or different community or faith organizations. So we're, we're making headway there and just bringing a different. Kind of training.
And it's primarily on the emergency management program side with Frank, but. Coordinating these efforts, but also involves dispatch. So Phil's involved on that side. Determining what we have for building access during a lockdown. For responders and making sure that dispatch has whatever information they need to give that responder. So, but when they come up against a barrier that they can't get through, dispatch can give them the information as to where the access devices are. And we're starting to highly recommend that those things are a combination. So a keypad, a box with a keypad, that then dispatch can give them the code. They can get in and whatever they need to get through that barrier is in that box. Then access to school cameras for dispatch. There are. We, we already have Goldendale. There's how many others? Two or three other school districts that have the same system that we use for the. The D M facility, security cameras. So that we're thinking that company. Everybody's use of that same service provider would allow us in dispatch to log in to those schools as well. More easily, get that access. We've struggled with the White Salmon School District in years past. So we can have access to their system somehow online. Because their system doesn't, isn't really set up to do that yet. So they're gonna have to make an investment. But those are the things that Frank and Phil are working on with all those schools to try and make sure we have what we need when the time comes.
And we are working with them as well, looking for funding for different alert systems and communication systems that. Facilitated communication back and forth. Versus the phone call taking, right? When we receive the nine one one, that's pretty direct, nine one one call from the school. But in a actual emergency. Beyond one in one patient, one student being hurt or something, our phones are gonna be off the hook so that. That direct connect communication, which is unofficial, would be difficult, the same as going out. And, you know, getting a, a recording of the football season, upcoming games and every special event before. You get to an operator or the other.
During the swatting incident in White Salmon, when dispatch called into the White Salmon's High School, Columbia High School. They had got the auto attendant and it was very frustrating to try and get through that to actually get someone to answer the phone. But. That's another piece we're putting together is the emergency notification system that we use for county notices. Also has a service designed for school campuses. They can have an app and, and staff members can have the app on their phones and they can push the button and communicate. Everything that's going on to their, the, the leadership, as well as make that automatic notification to nine one and so on. So. We're hoping that, like Phil said, that all the school districts in the county can sign on to some sort of grant funding and. Get this en masse and we can use the same system.
Do the schools already have their own system in place for that?
Not that I.
No, there, there used to be a panic alarm system several years ago that was purchased. It was a one-time purchase, felt to maintain. Some of the schools actually hired a hacker to try and. Update this because.
That, that was once, so this was a statewide program. With special funding and the state E S D. Didn't provide for the maintenance. So once it started failing, each individual school was on their own. And.
And it, it failed.
Failed within a couple of years. We won't talk about that anymore.
Right.
So now.
So, yes, no. So we're, we're working with everybody to try and make those communications better and, you know. Back of funding on some aspects there, but they have lots of. Trained professionals that hopefully can write grants. At a whole different level.
So next up, emergency response info for business projects and existing businesses. We. Been working with Mochi at the planning department to add some things that. Nine one dispatch as well as the Emergency Operations Center might need in the time of them. Even a day-to-day emergency for us or a significant incident. According to our standards, which would include. Contact information being updated. If I didn't already say that, this would be adding these conditions to the C U P process. So that unlike now, we reach out to the local businesses or the, in the cities, the police department or the fire departments. Reach out to the local businesses, try to get their updated contact information for responsible people, you know, twenty-four hour number. Whatever it might be. And then in the county for businesses or industrial sites, dispatch tries to do the same thing and get them updated. Working with Mochi to see if we can make that part of the conditional use permit that. They're required to provide that during the construction phase of their project. And then again, during the operational phase and update that information on a semi-annual basis. Two times a year would be best because in the past, we've had, who's listed as a responsible party for a business? Dispatch has called that number, got someone on the phone. Asked for the person that they had on the list as responsible and were informed that that person was deceased by their wife. So that's no, not a good thing. It didn't get us what we needed and it, and it's a, it's an awkward conversation to have. So. Working on that as well as like I mentioned before for the schools, that these companies would have. An access control box that is a combination. That just, they update us, dispatch has it, no matter what responder needs to get through that locked door, gate or whatever it might be. That we have it to give them and they can get through there. So another project, we did meet with Lund Hill representatives. And discuss their current. Health and safety plan, which is their internal plan, be clear on that. It's not a county plan. It's not an emergency response plan for the county. It's their company's internal response plan for what they do during an emergency on their site with their personnel. Not anything from the outside affecting them or how the fire district or law enforcement or EMS responds to their facility. That meeting went very well. We asked them for the same things we're gonna try and put into the C U P. They were more than willing to do all of those things. And in their case, they have a national control center number. Which will always be the same twenty-four seven and we only need that once.
Have you had time since we're talking about Lund Hill? Have you had time to look at the Bloomberg? E I S to weigh in with any of your issues or concerns?
Not, yeah, we talked about that last week, I think, and not yet, no.
What about with Lund Hill? Did you talk to him about vegetation management buffer that was part of their E I S?
Briefly, that wasn't part of this conversation. As it was intended, so their health and safety plan. What? Was his. Title, Site Supervisor indicated that, that. The process of vegetation management had broke down during construction with. Their contractors, so their subs were responsible for that and did not do it. And so the site supervisor now is taking over out of the construction phase into operations. Had been working on that. He had crews on it for, I don't remember what he said. They'd been working for three days or something on it and pulling double shifts. So that was something they identified internally that had fallen through the cracks. And they were doing what they could to justify that.
Do you have to read the, or a question that I sent in?
We get a response.
It had to do with the. What, what tools, if any, do we have on vegetation management? I guess we did, but I don't know that it was. I don't know that I ever shared the question, but you know, I, I would be.
I don't know that.
I can send it off, you can have it on future discussion elsewhere.
So right now what we're doing is part of that work with the planning department is. We're taking our current emergency contact information for businesses and updating it. To add it as part of that C U P process. And if the planning department director agrees, then that will become part of that process. We'll get the information that we need. For nine one dispatch or the E O C on a regular basis.
That's, that's only on new C U Ps. That's not gonna affect old ones, right?
That's correct. Well, we can take the same form and start giving out to current businesses. But at that point, it's voluntary, just like it is now, but it will be a, a better process and just cold calling.
We just hope that current businesses realize the advantage of being contacted firsthand.
Yeah, it's in their best interest. It's just a matter of whether they recognize that and take the time to provide the information. And how we can motivate them to do that. The Emergency Alert System Capabilities Project, E I S. Been researching that since the Newell Road Fire when. Sometime two, three days in, we had that community meeting and. Were told how many people didn't have phone service. Again, their landline only, there's very little cellphone service, especially in the community of Bickleton. So in that case, our emergency notification system messages don't get to them. They don't have a landline service. Or the landslide service is down, or they don't have cellphone service or internet to receive those messages. Then they, they don't receive them. The Emergency Alert System is designed. To be used in those instances and it's supposed to go out over all local radio stations and. The, unfortunately, the E I S for our county. Most of our county, we're in a district that is out of Oregon. And so that makes it a little more of a challenge. I have yet to be able to find anybody that can tell me that they're in charge of that. Frank is, is working on finding a contact person out of the Oregon. District that's responsible for our area. We attended a meeting last week specifically about this on the Washington. Emergency Communication Council meeting and got some leads. So. We'll be following up on that. And like I said, it's designed that if we have the proper equipment in emergency management, we can. And access to the system, we can create the message that our citizens need. And when we push it out to the E I S system, it forces it on to. The local broadcasters, radios and TV, they don't have a choice, at least the local radio stations that I've talked to. It's an automated thing that preempts their programming and puts our emergency message out in a voice. It's an automated thing that preempts their programming and puts our emergency message out in a voice uh format. Over the air, uh the challenge for us will be that for, like I said, most of our county comes out of the. E I S system in Oregon, but the far east end of our county would come out of Benton and. Some parts of Franklin and Yakima County um to those radio stations to reach. The east and northeast part of Clickatatt County. So we would likely have to send that message two or more times. To get it to everybody in the county. Uh or certain areas of our county. Um any questions? Okay, uh you could see training and exercises that are ongoing. We are working to schedule um a meeting that we discussed a while back. Sorry, radio system alarms going off. The overview for senior officials, so executives, electeds, appointed. Um yourself, directors, and other elected officials in the county and cities. Um hoping to have that. Um put together and ready for sometime this winter. Early next year, something like that, when we get past the holiday season when people have that time. And then next you'll see all the uh emergency management program grants and the details about them and their status. Oh, I see, I put Goldendale City Council meeting down here under community outreach, but it was all about wildfires. Then the uh U A S system team missions and training there. You have any questions, like you said, that's all pretty standard stuff. The U A S team did assist search and rescue in finding um. A subject, an exact location of a body in the Clickatatt River. See, that was a week ago Saturday. Um not last Saturday, but the week before. And um so that that helped them because it was a whitewater. River recovery helped them know exactly where that was, so they didn't have to do any kind of cursory search, it was reported the day before by some fishermen. And we had to go find the exact location, so. That was very beneficial.
That's the one we've been waiting for.
There's not been a positive identification of that person, however, that is the only person that's been reported missing on that river upstream from that location. And Employee of the Month for September, Communications Officer Jessica Steltz, so. Want to say uh congratulations to her, that was, we choose those folks based on the uh. Reports from their fellow team members and things that we observe, so. Jessica definitely deserves that honor.
How long has she been employed with you?
Uh we stole her from a dispatch center in the south. Three years ago, I think.
Four years ago, maybe?
I have to look at my record, and I think it's three or less.
Yeah, we didn't steal, we permanently, permanently borrowed.
Yes.
Better place to work.
Yeah, she came from here. Looking to relocate and we took prejudice advantage of that situation. We're happy to have her and I believe she's happy to be. She's uh a training officer for us now. And that's all I have for my report, anything else?
Uh the text to nine one one, now that we've hit the big three, which is probably ninety-five percent of all. Communications out there, um have we said anything online on our Facebook page about it to let people know? I mean, we've had two come through, but is the word getting out there, I didn't see it on the Facebook.
Not as of yet, um we're coordinating with the state, so. We're trying to get every county out there. Uh and we were one of the uh last few to get this going, uh to coordinate the same message across the board.
I think there's still two left, isn't there? One or two left that haven't.
So, yeah, we can start pushing that on our end, but we want to have that coordinated message because it's it's a whole new education piece. Uh we don't want everybody to text, uh because we cannot get the same information if they're able to call. Uh there's so much more information that goes into it, like the background noise, the tone of their voice, it tells us so many. Things that are um sometimes not set. And so if they're able to call, we want that and we want to make sure that the education piece goes with it.
Yeah.
For certain, you know, certain conditions absolutely test us.
And the state's reasoning behind asking individual counties to hold off on publicizing it. As well as why the state isn't publicizing it statewide, because they have a whole public education campaign in the can, ready to go, is that. If we advertise it to everybody, they don't recognize county boundaries, so when they drive from one jurisdiction to another that. Has and doesn't have it, they try to text, it will go anywhere. Um where it will go to the wrong place, cause issues, so they were hoping, wasn't it supposed to be? Well, the first one was December of last year and then it was July of this year, but there's still. Other agencies that haven't done it, so out of respect for that request, we haven't publicized it ourselves.
Okay.
But we surely can. It's, yeah, that was, like I said, just a request on their side. Anything else?
How many people do we have signed up for our initial operator training for our S U A S team?
The new basic training course for November. I think.
It says September.
Is it September? Oh, yes, the end of this month, sorry, I'm confusing things. I think the last update Frank gave me, which wasn't a final count, there was three new people. Uh emergency management volunteers that were interested in that program. One of which already has extensive uh experience, does, he flies UAVs commercially. And actually is doing uh crop spraying with one, it's huge and carries, I don't know how many gallons of. Of of liquid and I didn't know they existed that large to be able to do that, but. Right here, locally, and he wants to join our team, so. It's gonna be a great addition.
How many others do we have currently? So we're gonna have depth in there?
Yeah, currently I think we have twelve uh people trained. Qualified to fly. And most everybody, although they can do either or, um most everybody is qualified not to be a pilot and observer. They could be just an observer under our program, but most people do both.
Great.
I don't have any questions for you guys, good job, you've been having a good work.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
I didn't have it filed in the right folder, so I just.
I thought you were going through your emails this whole time.
And that's what I got from reading the permit.
What, did you read the um?
But I, after reading the permit, I submitted it just in case there was something.
Right.
That I wasn't seeing and the answer is no, there's nothing.
But what about in the. Their E I A, there was nothing in there?
They have to have a welfare mitigation plan with the local fire district. But we don't check to see if they ever make the plan, did the plan, have a plan, what the plan says. Then, that was between them, any new permits might be there.
Right, but for that one, that's.
Same idea, there's nothing we have to make them do vegetation management. In that, in future ones, could be different. I don't know why I didn't have it filed, I don't have it filed under planning. Let's say it was.
You got anything else for the good of the order?
Um no.
Before, is uh R C Meg gonna be here this afternoon?
That's planned.
Okay. Cause she went in person.
I don't know.
Okay, without anything else for the good of the order, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we recess for lunch.
Um I'll sit down second, the motion, uh any discussion? Hearing none, um all those in favor of recessing for lunch back at one o'clock, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion passes. Alrighty, it is one o'clock, it is time for our regular business meeting of the Clickatatt County Board of Commissioners, let the record show all commissioners are present. Uh as I call this meeting to order, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
And I will second.
Okay, we're in motion to second to approve business agendas presented, any discussion on that? Hearing none. Looking at my notes, um all those in favor of approval of business agendas presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh we have no commissioner meeting minutes to approve this week. Uh so next up will be citizen comments, citizen comment, sorry. Had to fix my mic, so I turned off for a sec, uh citizen comment will be limited to three minutes per individual. Uh please state your name and general location for the record at the start of your testimony and try to um. Keep your testimony within the bounds of issues happening within Clickatatt County. With that, we'll start in the room, give you first shot, citizen comment, nope, she's passing. Uh so we'll go online, anybody online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Raise your hand or unmute yourself online if you have comments. Okay. Well, thank everyone for their comments today. Um we will go on about signing our names and doing our business up here, if anybody in the room or online has citizen comment in the next. Twenty-three minutes, uh raise your hand, unmute yourself, or in otherwise some way get our attention. Uh and we'll take your comments.
Uh what is that, the?
Yeah, I wanted to go ahead and just have it on record and during new business, we can talk about the meeting today if you'd like. Whenever you'd like.
Travel reimbursement for the one with train? Didn't that part of it at least be filled out for meals and whatnot?
It's on the front, means if that's free, then um. Essentially, when they turn into the autograph, yes.
Oh, I see. Well, she has dates on here, but she doesn't have anything filled out and no signature there. Technically, I'd be not sign another one if it ain't also that, you know how I am with travel. I'll do the math.
Still in citizen comment, if anybody has citizen comment while I pull out my calculator. Yes, in the future, I would even like to see that still now. Dylan, citizen comment, if anybody in the room or online has public comment, raise your hand or unmute yourself. Gotta be something going on. By the way, for you, you've shown interest before, I spent, I don't know how long walking, I don't know how many stairs. Uh to try to cross match the pictures with the pictures that were in the book that I submitted to get printed. And some of the pictures weren't in my books, I don't know where they got them. And one of them, the train picture down there anyways on the wall twice, it's actually on the third floor and the second floor, didn't notice that until I walked the building seven hundred and forty-two times. And there's more stairs on one side of the building is is on the other side of the building, don't ask me. Um you'd think the building's level, there should be the same amount of stairs, but there isn't. Anyway, so I did turn it over to staff, so we should have some description cards. Uh or at least a price quote um eventually coming to get most of them done, and then I'll have to get with the historical society on the ones that I don't have. Uh to get a description on some of the others like. Uh, to get a description on some of the others like that one, uh, actually those two don't have a description for one of those. But you seem fascinated by the pictures, so I thought I'd, I'd throw that two hours of my day the other day at it. Yeah, the descriptions are, are, are kinda nice to have. Um, they explain a lot more, it's like the top floor very end. Um, there's cows coming up, the, uh, uh, the grade over there on the other side of, they hate to say, but a damn hill on the other side of Sizemore, what's their road? No, the road, Dallas Mountain Road, um, it's the duly cattle that were being brought up for that, and I put it, I put it as one of my pictures because, uh, when that estate was being settled, they donated, uh, money to the county for improvements to the fair. So it's like, alright, well, let's, you know, throw, that was the only picture in the book about anything to do with, with the doleys, and they were doing a cattle drive up that road, so it's, it's just one of those, it'd be nice to be able to get the titles on it. Dylan, citizen comments, if anybody wants to not hear me speak anymore, they need to speak up. They all unmute themselves at the same time. Kidding. No, usually it's the very end, somebody spouts up, somebody's got something, whether it's in the room or online, I don't know that we've ever. Um, before Zoom, yeah, quite a bit. Um, cause I would sit in the room and, I mean, they'd get done signing their papers and just kind of randomly chat. And so then we would, I would be sitting out there and just kind of engage in conversation. And talk about a multitude of topics because you're scheduled this time for a half an hour and you don't go on to do other business, though you're done. Um, now with Zoom, it, it's more people have the avenue to talk, so otherwise it would just be you sitting here for half an hour talking about whatever you want.
Hi, can I do this? Thank you. Um, I wanted to let you know that it is a tentative date on September twentieth that the City of White Salmon is going to put on the agenda the feasibility study that they did concerning, um, the youth center and the possible relocation in the park building. Also, um, would like for the Commissioners, if they can come to the meeting or zoom into the meeting, um, to hear what they have to say. Um, and, uh, on the week of that meeting, I'm gonna look to the agenda on Monday and, and come back on the Tuesday to let you know if that's actually confirmed, and if it wasn't happening on that meeting, it would most likely happen on the following one. But September twentieth is the date right now for tentative. Childcare is economic growth and childcare is infrastructure, and it is the economic growth that makes sustainability, um, in a community. Uh, I am going to point out that I don't agree with what you had spoken about, um, Commissioner Christopher, when you associate my advocacy for childcare as increasing tax dollars or increasing counting spending. What I'm looking for is for the county to make a commitment to invest in families and children. And that the strength of that county with that economic growth, when you do make those kinds of investments, and that you find time to look at the budget on how you would place children and families and the values and priorities of that four-H youth center childcare. And, um, I do think you're correct, though, Commissioner Christopher, when you say that childcare would be nice and a dog shelter would be nice also, again, it's about the budgets and the priority and the way that you prioritize it. Now my barometer on COVID. I have an eighty-five-year-old mother who I plan to keep on the planet as long as possible, and her health and welfare is my barometer. My barometer is also that a dear friend lost her husband, the love of her life, when he walked into a hospital and spent thirty days there until every organ in his body failed, and she walked out of that hospital without him. And when she walked out of that hospital without him, she lost the love of her life, and her whole family was turned upside down emotionally and also financially, and that is the barometer in which I address COVID. I also want to say that a virus doesn't care about lectures on freedom. And the county needs to commit to supporting and protecting the work of County Health Department, and the threats from the community members against the Health Department must never be repeated. And what they had to endure. And finally, on the ongoing insidious defamation against Commissioner Anderson. And the attacks now to the prosecutor, that is textbook definition of a smear campaign. And they are literally throwing mud on the walls and see what sticks. I'll finish up quickly. It's a lot of innuendo and slanderous, and I, and I feel like when they start moving into attacking the library and its program, as one pro, um, speaker did, it's peak performance.
Thank you.
It's into fascism.
Your time is up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll be here again next week.
Excellent, thanks.
Uh, let's go back, look in the room, and go back online, anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Four nine zero one.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, this is Sherry in Houston. And, um, okay, I'd like to bring up what I talked about last week. And I'm hoping that as our government, the people's government, you can educate the people, because maybe I have it all wrong. And I hope I do, but let's, I'd hope that you would, you know, talk like you said, Commissioner Christopher, have conversations with the people. I talked about our judicial PA writing a ordinance, which is a law for the county. And I believe that that is not how our government is to work, there is to be a separation of powers. And our judicial is not to be writing laws. So if I'm wrong, please correct me. And if I'm right, well, I think our county needs to take note of your procedures. And, you know, that how you're operating. And as for budget and priorities, I have found over the three years I've been watching this local government that priorities come in special favors. My neighbor was talking to me the other day here in Houston, and she said, what do you think about that RV park going in off Spring Creek? We're, we're against it. And I said, well, who's, who's applicant? What's the last name? Cause I can tell you whoever that applicant is, it's a special favor. Like under canvas, a special favor, it's a death trap. People cannot evacuate, but we've been over that, nobody seems to care, not even our fire district. So, special favors like Courtney Road for development, which, you know, a youth camp wanted to develop, and they had to pay a hundred thousand dollars to improve their road. With the right name, you can get the county to improve your road. And who pays for those roads? The people. So maybe those special favors can be halted and just funds can be distributed to family and children. And things that do help our people and the communities. So, again, I asked for you to educate me as one of the people. Is the judiciary, the judicial part of the law, branch of the law, supposed to be writing laws for the government? I'd like a yes or no answer, and, and again, I, I could be totally off. But I believe that is part of separation of powers, so please answer that question and do not avoid it this week, because you know I'm referring to the short-term rental ordinance, which we also know is not a smear, it's a fact. Commissioner Anderson has a short-term rental, which he was told by the county planning that he has to have a conditional use permit multiple times, and now we're writing that ordinance to, so he doesn't have to comply. Your director, planning director told me I needed a conditional use permit.
Sherry.
So please answer the question of powers, separations of government powers, thank you.
Anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Hearing none. Have about seven minutes remaining in citizen comments, for anybody that would like to make citizen comment. Dylan, citizen comment, if anybody has citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners, please unmute yourself or raise your hand. Very quiet day today. Hmm, you see the latest email? Just see how much they get paid? Yeah, no, I'm just gonna file that one, thank you. Still in citizen comment, if anybody has citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners, we are in citizen comment for two more minutes. Quiet day out there today. I would expect this if it was like ninety-five outside and everybody was in the park or something. Maybe that's just the. Last call, one minute. Alright, it is one twenty-five, so we will end citizen comment and start Commissioner responses, if they have any. Um, this might even go quick since there was only two commenters. I guess since I see typing on my left and reading on my right, I'll go first. Uh, Gabby, your White Salmon Childcare meeting on September twentieth, I'll be driving to Ellensburg on that day for Washington State Association of Counties meeting. Um, as far as your childcare statements. Um, and childcare is budget and budget is childcare, and I wholly agree with you. Um, but we just finished up the month-long process of budget in this county budgeting for next year. In doing so, we made two million dollars worth of cuts to balance our budget. And I don't recall one conversation from one Commissioner asking us to add six, seven hundred thousand dollars into the budget for childcare. Um, so it is not just me, it is unsustainable. I just tell it like it is. Um, and people can have a problem with that if they want, but it doesn't make it any less factual that this county does not have the money to open a childcare facility without going out for a tax levy and asking the voters if they believe government should be involved in childcare. Um, Sherry, uh, your statement of the prosecutor shouldn't be writing laws, the prosecutors never wrote a law. Technically, anyone, including the prosecutor, or you, or our janitor, or whoever wants to, can create a draft. Um, that then this Board of Commissioners can adjust, tweak, or do whatever, and then this Board of Commissioners votes on it to enact that as law. Uh, so separation of powers, if the prosecutor was gonna write legislation and sign it himself, um, yes, that would be illegal, but he didn't do that. Um, so on this one, I'm going to actually side with the prosecutor. Um, and, and say, while one can argue that he shouldn't be drafting the draft, um, there's also nothing illegal about doing so, and since then that draft has been tweaked and rewritten by this board multiple times. Um, so that's how that goes, you didn't mention that, the, our budget has special favors. Um, I would, I would be curious on next Tuesday's comment if you could specifically point out what special favors are in our budget, so I can go back and look at it. Um, because I have never voted yes on any special favor in this county, which includes Courtney Road. Um, so, um, if you could point out what that special favor is that I would have voted yes on, I would, I would like to look at it. Uh, in the RV parks and the under canvas has nothing to do with budget. Um, neither one of those are in our budget. Um, as revenues or expenses, so they are not a budget item, that is a policy decision, not a budget item. Um, so yeah, going back to special favors, I have never voted yes on a special favor, I have never granted any individual of this county a special favor. Um, does this county do that? Yes. Do I do it? No. So if you watch the vote, you might be able to see where there's descending votes on things, and that would give you something to maybe investigate. Um, but to say I voted on special favors is absolutely incorrect. But to say I voted on special favors is absolutely incorrect. With that, that's the end of my statement, do either my seatmates have comment?
Sure. Gabby, hey, thank you for always championing the childcare issue. I'm going to be in absolute opposition of my seatmate on that one, and I think going forward, we'll find ourselves having a lot of conversations about that. Maybe it's I'm a mother or a grandmother, but I've lived through that situation myself. I have children that are now facing that with their children in our county. And I see it as I go into those daycares and into the youth center, the kids that benefit from that, we have children that aren't out on the street at risk. And we also have benefits to the parents who can continue to work and contribute to our society. So I am a champion of childcare and youth centers and I'll stand on that. So thank you for also reminding us, our schedules do get out of control, and yes, please, give me a reminder. And even though our secretaries are really great about helping us with our schedule, I get behind, so always let me know and I'll be there, thank you.
Gabby, thank you very much for your comment on childcare. Commissioner Zoller, I will try to attend the September twentieth City of White Salmon meeting, we'll figure out who, who's available that evening when we get closer. You've heard from me that I am in favor of our funding for our youth center in White Salmon, I would be in favor of the same. Type of funding for a youth center in Goldendale that we would have to prioritize that over others, in terms of. Starting a county-owned childcare facility, I don't see that being in the cards anytime. Soon or upcoming as it's not a core county function. Speaking to that budget that Commissioner Christopher was so aptly correct on. When we are looking at the budget cuts that we had to do this year, that's affecting many of our departments, the budget cuts next year will likely. Or in the next few years are going to get worse, not better, and I don't know how I could. Take dollars away from the sheriff's department or the other core county functions. And direct those towards a childcare facility when there is the private sector out there that can provide those services, and I. Would hope that more, more childcare facilities begin to start and that the state loosens the reins a little bit. On the overburdened some regulations. Ms. Bosque, you are, I'd be happy to help educate you on what that means. The legislative body is tasked with adopting an ordinance. Or any code changes or laws, that does not mean we are required to actually write them. If you go up to Olympia, you'll find that very few legislators actually write their own ordinances. It is either the caucus lawyers or it is special lobbying groups. There's a lot of different people who write the actual language and then they find someone to champion it, I know that's not. What we like to think of is how the world works, but that is how the world works. I would personally always like to ensure that the prosecuting attorney who is the lawyer for the county would review all ordinances. Before they are passed to ensure that they are lawful and that we're not going to be opening ourselves up for suit. And so whether the, the attorney writes it to begin with as a draft, at least now you know that they're going to be in favor of it. Or you, you're not setting yourself up for a position of. You know, you spend two years working on a document and then the attorney says you can't do this. Because here's all the reasons why, and you feel like you've wasted all your time. So technically, when it comes to writing of ordinances, I think that having our legal counsel be involved in that. Design and development is a positive thing, not a negative thing. And as for special favors, I'm sorry, but Courtney Road was on the six-year road plan, it was on there for years, it had been talked about for years. Every year during it, it slowly worked its way up, it was planned for over the course of a decade. And then when it finally came to having the money that we'd saved up to spend on it and get the grants, it was built. It was not a special favor for any one person or any one group of people, it was actually designed around. Getting people off that mountain in case there's a fire and having an, another egress. There's no way if it was for a special favor, it would have been able to make it through the gorge commission for gosh sakes. So I, it, while it sounds fun to, to be able to say that everybody gets special favors, it's just. Patently not the case, so with that, thank you very much for your time.
I, I would like to take this opportunity to have a clarifying question of my seatmate, Commissioner Zoller. Who said she disagreed with me on the childcare part. I guess I'm questioning where, do you believe that the childcare should be a county function and paid for out of county government? And should be schedule and agenda item to discuss that thing, or where are we going with this?
I don't think we need to right now get into it, I think as it moves forward, we will have workshops, and I think. It can be. A semi-county function to help move it and there's money to find other places a lot of times. And we need to assist in anything we can do to move childcare forward. I don't see it as an absolute county function.
So I, I agree with all of that.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, we can help facilitate, and yes, we can help work and team build and find money. For any other entity that wants to run a daycare or childcare. I was stating that it was not a core county function and that there was no money in our budget. To fund. So that's why I was trying to clarify if there was a difference of opinion of what I. I said there, but it sounds like, no, we're not, we're on the same page. Okay, perfect, wow. We only had two comments today and we drug our time five minutes over. Interesting. Up next, it's one thirty, time for public meetings, public hearings and bid openings. We have before us. A public meeting to consider the final approval of boundary line adjustment BLA twenty twenty-three dash zero eight. In the Clickatad vicinity and we'll have a little bit of a staff update to start. Sure, put it up, the, the audience would love to hear you speak.
This is a boundary line adjustment. For Welch, he has, Welch has one personally, the other one is Welch Enterprises. It's BLA two zero two three dash zero eight is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels zero four, one, three, two, three, five, zero, zero, seven, one, three, zero, zero. And zero four, one, three, two, three, five, zero, zero, seven, one, one, zero, zero, off of L Street. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section twenty-three township four, range thirteen of the Blamette Meridian. Clicktag County, Washington, in the town of Clickatad. The administrative review of the boundary line adjustment has been completed, signatures have been obtained from the road health planning and treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met, the board find, if the board finds it is in the public's interest to approve the boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA two zero two three dash zero eight.
Pretty simple one.
Yeah, but it's just interest. Cause it's like they're taking the river frontage of both properties. I mean, not that I'm here to tell a private landowner what they can or can't do.
I think it's, so there's a shoreline and the, the one property has more shoreline coverage where they can't do anything in, and so they shifted it. Over a little bit, I think it's gonna give them some more building room on that one that has the longer section of the shoreline.
I mean, they can probably split that second one.
Yeah, well, I think they're gonna do a garage or something so that way they can.
I don't have any questions.
No, I don't have any questions, either, just some of these get kind of. Interesting as you try to go through their thought process on why they're doing it, but then again, if they looked at mine, when I do mine, they're gonna go, what is he doing? Same thing. Any questions on this?
Mister Chairman, we have before us a boundary line adjustment BLA twenty twenty-three dash zero eight. With applicant Robert Welch and Welch Enterprises, my motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve BLA twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of boundary line adjustment BLA twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mister Chairman, we have forced the consent agenda with seven items, my motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion is second to approve the consent agenda, anybody see anything on the consent agenda that warranted attention? Wanted discussion. Alright, hearing that, we have a motion, a second, no further discussion, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda. With all seven items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passable.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the account payable warrants in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. And the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. Date ending September eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second to pay the bills. A discussion on the bills. I went through the bills again today and there was obviously nothing of excitement in there to share with you. Which is always a good day. With that barring further discussion, all those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next up is short-term rentals at two o'clock, but I'd wanna start it through the clock so everybody has a chance to be here.
Can we get an update from Commissioner Zoller on how the meeting went?
Sure. Yeah, it was a great meeting, I thought it was good. So it. We only had notice about a week out. On that the Columbia River Gorge Commission is considering doing updates to the compact that is now thirty years old. So not having time to digest the documents or go out for legal review. They did have their public meeting today and explained. Why they wanted to move forward with it and then entertain questions from staff and also the public. So their motion to approve to move forward was based on the fact that. Both governors have to agree to update the compact and then they can move forward with the work on it. And from the comments they received from the public, from staff, from several counties, from several planners. They went back to work on what the agenda motion was that they were going to, how they were gonna wordsmith that. And I was very happy with our representative Valerie on the commission, she. Led the charge on how to recraft some of that language so that it said. Instead of saying the governors give approval to move the process that they had already been thinking about, it. Contained the language that they would. Open the conversations with the governors to entertain. Moving forward with meetings so that everyone could be involved, so that we'll move into the, to the. Involving the counties, involving the public, involving everybody, and then go back around with. What suggestions are. And it was interesting, what they're looking for is to. Amend the documents. To bring it up to speed because they have found with. Commissions across the United States and they cited New York versus New Jersey in one where. They just had a very, very lengthy lawsuit of six years to. Dissolve their relationship, where New Jersey and New York. Dissolved their commission. And it was quite the battle because it involved very high power ports that even have their own police. So it seemed in talking about it, even some of the people brought it up, it seems so. Higher level and more intense and more moving parts in it than what just our gorge commission is here. But they all relate to each other because they are commissions, and so they wanna re. Look at their language that if ever we get into a compact between the states and one of them wants to leave, how does that happen? Right now, they, there's no design on it and it could happen if Oregon decided to leave the compact, they could leave. But how you divide up property is how you divide up, who's going to take over responsibilities, it's never been defined, so that's one of the things they're working on. But they, a lot of people in the meeting today commented on that there might be a lot of unintended consequences with what they were looking for. So they wanna go back and really visit those before we ever suggest anything to the governors of how we'd like to do it. So they're thinking maybe twenty twenty-five having it ready. Because it would have to be a legislative move, it'd have to be submitted and approved by the legislature. So that was kind of the opening meeting of just starting to move. So I felt it was a pretty good meeting. I was glad I listened to it, learned a lot.
Questions? It's a, good to hear that Valerie is. Spearheading the, the questions when the gorge commission is looking to make changes. And hopefully we'll have a good update from her sometime soon, we haven't heard from her recently.
Yeah.
It's a little bit of a couple months. Wasn't she here like two months ago?
Yeah, she came in with an update with Christina from the gorge commission, that wasn't really her update to us, yeah. Yeah, we'll have to, you know, we've never sat with her.
Do that on a Thursday, you know, so he can hear the full truth.
We need a workshop with her to say, you know, this is kind of our direction.
That wouldn't be horrible, just schedule her every, you know, three months or something.
And did you have a good chance to talk with her before this meeting, so you two were on the same page?
We didn't even connect.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just making sure she was doing.
Yeah, and she just moved right forward and did everything that I would have wanted her to do, so, yeah.
That's encouraging.
She was right on our same level of where we wanna go, I think.
Okay, more things to discuss. For our staff. These are staff discussions. I thought we were gonna have a PA request form in our shared. Or folder for all the PA requests, we were gonna keep them in a separate place so we can look at them wherever, is that not on a shared drive?
It was, but it seems to me that everything is deleted.
Oh, so there was a PA thing in there. Cause I went looking for that PA request that we were discussing this morning with. Fire management. And I'm like, I'm gonna do something about this, so anyway, we're going to, which brings up the next question. I believe that. There is. No purpose. For any of the three commissioners to have. Edit access to the shared. Of anybody's listening. That we should be read only. So that if something accidentally gets deleted or moved, it's your fault. And not any one of our fault. So we should be able to get in there and look at everything and see everything and download it on the R drive if we want. Where we can go edit, change things, do whatever we want, but we don't accidentally delete things, we don't accidentally move things or edit things or any of that. So I, I can't unilaterally say that, but if that is the consensus of the order. That, that, that should probably be done to save us going forward. And for all future boards, that would be wise, too, the last board didn't have to deal with it cause they ran iPads and I don't think they did. Much of anything other than looking at their email, but if we're gonna be more playing in computers. We need to take the, put the training wheels back on. For us commissioners up here, so we don't screw something up.
Great, I've had things just disappear, I'm like, where did I? What happened to that, I looked at it.
I was looking for an email in my own email box for like ten minutes earlier.
I know.
And I filed it under planning instead of prosecutor, so I couldn't find. Ran it if I'd have just did a little search, boom, popped right top.
I think we, yeah.
So anyway, yes, if you could reach out to IT to change those permissions, that would. Lovely, I didn't hear it at all.
I mean, I don't willingly go around deleting things, I know how to run the computer, so I don't need training wheels, but.
I, I was being nice.
Just protect yourself, I don't wanna ever blame you.
Can't see any reason that we would need edit because I send everything to, through email. Because I wanna have that email, cause anything that gets emailed goes into the lockbox too.
Regardless on how the couple of items went missing from here. It's just a, the situation that needs fixed going forwards, that was the most.
Some weird.
Politically correct way to.
Did you search for it?
I have not, I have not, I actually started with just looking for the agenda today. And I had to go.
Opinion request is G shared drive data.
So it's a data, it's not in a separate.
I'm gonna say that maybe that. I'm gonna say that maybe that, going through the whole thing during a slow time.
Yeah, but it's the one I'm talking about.
This is never happening.
The one I showed you earlier about the uh, fire mitig.
I've never looked in it, so I don't know.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We needed, we need to make sure it's current. Um, so that when we receive things, they just, it gets filed in there. Wherever that folder is, I don't care. I'll learn to find where you put it. Uh, just as long as you file it all in there, so those things are easy to get to. Um, cause investment conflict and Blake decision are the only two things I see in it. And we will change all that around as we have a new clerk who's gonna do things in a different way than the old clerk and. So things will have to be flexible until we find a home for everything.
Well, if you may ask her, how does the board feel about us changing the formatting of the minutes?
Hmm.
It just, the reason why I bring this up is because it takes so long to fix the formatting. We go in and start typing with cutting and pasting. It takes longer.
Can you show us a sample of what you would like to make it? That might be an easy answer.
Saves you time.
I like to like look at things and poke things, touch things and shake them, see if they fall apart.
There's nothing more frustrating than trying to format and. Having to cut and paste to do it.
No, I'm, I'm wide open.
You know me, I don't. Detailitarian. I don't care what it looks like. Uh, since we got a little bit of time, um. Uh, Chelsea and I had a meeting with Redline Communications. Um, they do a bunch of consulting for broadband providers. Um, and um, interested in uh, writing up um, some broadband ideas for Clicky Tech County. Um, they've worked in a lot of different spaces with a lot of different providers, including Astound Wave. Um, and they actually do work underneath wave on some of their constructions and. We had a really, really positive meeting uh, about the direction. Um, that we could go, knowing that, you know, one, one company just got a big grant loan package for this area. Another company is looking around the Lyle, Housam or Lyle Snowden area. Um, but that still leaves a lot of open space in the county that's more hinterlands that nobody's been able to provide a. A measure of possibility and um.
By hinterlands in Glenwood?
Uh, Glenwood Trout Lake, um.
Yeah.
You know, further east.
Forward movement. That's great.
Right, and so the, the issue is, you know, usually there's a twenty percent match on these grant programs. Um, and so we want to focus on areas that are considered unserved. Because if it's unserved, then hopefully we can get a grant for a hundred percent so that we can get the, at least the design done for some of this, that it's all, it's all fiber to the hole. Um, and then hopefully if we can get the design done, then we can find somebody who's willing to take the project on.
Great.
So they're just, they don't actually do the project. They're just, what are they, planning? Planners? That's what they do?
Planners, engineers, all that. They, this, this all like, say.
It's just weird to me that they want to come in and spend money and design a project, but I'm not gonna put the project in. To me, it's almost like you might be building a bridge to nowhere.
We can apply.
And how are you gonna get state grant money for something that's potentially.
Well, I mean, technically, we're going to design a bridge without having all the money for the bridge, so whether the bridge goes somewhere or nowhere, you better get the, the designs done first.
Interesting. Don't cost me anything right now, so I'm fine.
I've just given you a heads up of the, the meeting occurred and that, you know, broadband's always an issue. Um, a lot of it's been solved in a lot of these areas. Um.
I don't know about that answer, but it's helped.
It's, it's, so, you know, when you're taking somebody that's say eight miles from the nearest home. You'll never make it pencil to take a fiber line all the way out there. You never will.
No.
Um, when you get to the areas where you can get it down between two and eight thousand dollars per passing. It can make financial sense with a little bit of grant help in order to get it down there.
Well, the rest of us are on satellite and probably get a stick on satellite the rest of our life.
Or tell the satellites fall out of the sky.
Pretty much. Cause it will never be cost effective and nor will it ever get cost effective.
Right.
Uh, so. And.
I'm not too good with myself.
I am going.
Actually like myself.
Which satellite are you on?
I'm on Starlink.
Oh, you did? Oh, good.
I can even game on Starlink.
Then I found another additive to it.
Depends on what your, it needs to be.
Um, I'm trying to think of the name and I'll have to think of the name. It was just one simple box that I bought and it's made for farms and ranches. Went outside of my um.
A range extender?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And it should, it'll go nine miles with different bouncers. Uh, we have access on the river now.
I put a range extender on, on my property and it kind of was half hearted. I ended up just setting. Mine up into a mesh network with two outdoor antennas and I mean, everything's covered now. Down in the valley.
I don't know what can go nine miles in that valley around corners.
What I, well, no, it's, it's line of sight.
It's line of sight.
But I have a, a fairly big line of sight, a few different ways, and so.
Down, down to the river, you know, a couple hundred feet or three hundred feet, right?
No, uh-uh. And it goes down to the end of my property onto the neighbors about seven or eight hundred feet.
Out of a Wi-Fi extent.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then you can connect on the farms with.
I mean, I had tried reaching my father-in-law's house a hundred feet away.
They connect with what they call a hub.
Usually you do it.
And it goes. No, and I'll send you the name of.
Oh, wow. Cause like I said, mine, yeah, that's fine. Mine shoots it at the barn and then the barn shoots it down the canyon.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I couldn't get two hundred feet out of my Wi-Fi center.
Yeah.
And it was intermittent coverage and you couldn't do good speed. You get something, but not good speed.
You can run a laptop and a smart TV six hundred feet.
Ah.
Away.
Interesting. Yeah, my, I mean, setting up the wireless hub was only four hundred bucks or something.
This was two fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can't remember the name.
Maybe that was my problem because I bought a little eighty dollar jobby when I tried it that way.
Yeah.
And we put one in my house window and one in his house window to try to make the range closer and it's still.
You know. Yeah, I was shocked. I told myself for the price, I'll, I'll try it and it just was so easy.
I'd be curious how it ha- how it works through the winter and cloud and rain and you don't get all the atmospheric debris in there.
I was a little worried about uh, Starlink at that, but it's awesome. Never a problem with it.
No, Starlink's good as, until they sell far more of them and then it'll get slow just like. Uh, the other satellite companies were great and, and they got bad.
Mm-hmm.
We're killing time for everybody that just arrived. We have two, three, four more minutes before our next uh, topic, which will be short term rentals. I guess I should probably get that packet. Oh, this was printed, I printed this off of an email that Lynn sent. You want a copy?
Oh, no, I think I'm good. I read it. I went through and read it.
Yeah, it was sent on August thirtieth. From Lynn.
I have it here somewhere. I was reading it a minute ago. What I did was that, but I didn't find anything in it that I felt.
Not, I didn't see much, much exciting. Uh, a couple small. Tokens.
Was this uh, an update from this morning?
Um.
Just an FYI.
Yeah, Public Works. Um, has finally rid up, wrote up the application that we're applying for landfill gas funds for the other. Two hundred thousand that didn't get funded last year.
Okay.
Um, to submit to the P U D for. That one negotiation thing.
Okay, I'll keep that though.
We are going to need the some time filler. Because if this is at two o'clock and our next thing ain't until three fifteen, we're gonna have about an hour of having nothing to do. Cause I don't picture this talk going more than about fifteen minutes.
Oh.
Uh, we get Lynn's gonna be the time filler then. If she said it needs an hour and fifteen minutes, she's gonna have to cover the other hour. I can cover fifteen minutes, but then I'm done and.
Said I didn't, no. They usually take a while.
Well, that's, well, that's because we've done all the dirty work and there's not much to move on now.
We could hope. We could hope.
Don't do that. Run around the block.
Sorry for the yawning folks. One minute, giving everybody a chance who may want to be here to be here. Or on Zoom land.
Read it word for word, Alyssa.
Your mic on down there, by the way?
Dry.
Yeah, I noticed you wasted a whole piece of paper.
It was to separate everything.
Taxpayers had to pay one penny for this.
It was probably like point oh. Oh, some.
Oh, oh, one.
Easier to track.
Alrighty, it's two o'clock. Yeah, yeehaw. It is uh, time for the billing department. Director Lynn Ward, update on short term rentals. Um, so I don't know if you want to start with the documents that you prepared for us, or if you want me to just. Take the documents you prepared and suggest edits.
I don't care either.
Alright. Um.
Everybody probably read it. There's no point in me, you know.
You, well, yeah, but you have, you have the, the draft as we've been writing it. But then you actually have it formatted as it would be.
If.
In our.
Right, right. So the first, the first version is.
Can I just ask, is there a copy available of that?
Um, was it in our packet or no? No, it wasn't in our packet. Uh, mine has notes all over it. Um, so there was a couple. So let's start with the first page, which is the X X X X.
Right.
X up there.
And what I did on the strike through version was take the. One that we've been working on. And making all our notes back and forth. Kind of did a strike through and then in blue is what. I think we've been discussing, um. Kind of, you know, made the verbiage what we have been talking about. So that's that version. The other version is basically the same. Language formatted differently. I formatted it. According to what our title fifteen and title sixteen are.
Yeah.
I'm used to reading them that way, so that's why I did that. Not that we have to do it in that format, but. Just to kind of look at the two ways and see which way. As a group, we think it reads best.
Alright, so I'll point out my um. Top line, she, she has the provisions in the section are necessary to promote tourism and economics. She changed development to improvement. Within Clicky Tech County, I think development's better than improvement.
Okay.
I.
Yeah. Okay. To develop.
Back to development. Um, I have no issues with the rest of that after number three. Where it says an S T R shall conform with ethical standards, code requirements and building plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, health, blah, 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 blah. Um, it needs to add, we need to add something about the, the road, the fire road to get in the. That it needs to driveway must conform to title twelve road standards for S T Rs.
On number.
Whether you put it in three or make it number four. And then move number four to number five and number five and number six. Um, but that.
Either way.
That gets the road in there that I'm looking for and then. Um. Then we'll just make the title twelve road standard for driveway include S T R. Um, which is a whole nother forum. So we slot that in there. Um. I didn't have any other issues with your first page. Maybe I'll just go through my changes and then we'll go through her changes. Um, I did see you added a more of an explanation to the R C Ws, which I like.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just pointing at an R C W and then making the. Um, person you hand the paper to go look it up. It's kind of nice to just give them the whole dang thing.
Well, and that was someone else's suggestion that we should put it in there, not just reference it.
Not just reference it, right? Whoever that was is brilliant.
I don't remember.
It wasn't me. It was probably you, wasn't it?
Like R C Ws.
Um. Other than that, I have any issues with page two. Um, page three, you have in here the, the current rate of two hours for clerical time. I didn't know if there needed to be a public works rate for road inspection time. And if you. Why, I just want anybody applying to kind of know what they're getting into and they get into it. Um, so whether it's added to your. Paragraph for your building clerical time or, and it says, and also. However much one hour of public works or whatever you feel, your staff time is going to be to inspect that. Um, at whatever your base rate is, and we won't put the number, we'll just put the base rate, so we don't have to change this next year when your rate changes.
Yeah, the only time we, we don't charge if the road meets the current standard.
Okay.
If the road doesn't meet the current standard.
So how do we word, word that and could have?
If, what, what typically we do for development is somebody goes out for the pre-sub. Hooks at the road that's serviced. And if it doesn't meet the current standard, we tell the apple at the pre-sub that there won't be a pre-sub of this, but this is just how we put it out. Is that your road doesn't meet the current standard, you'll need to get for your road standard. At that point, then when we do that, we bill them for usually, depends on how many times you have to go out.
Right, but that, so that first time you're going in to inspect, whether it passes or fails, you didn't bill. So technically you wouldn't be billing these people either. So there we go. We don't need to edit in there. Okay.
Well, I'm gonna be pointed is if the road didn't meet the standard, you had to go back out.
Right, but that's a whole separate.
Yes, that's a whole tougher thing.
Okay. Um. My next question or issue is on the top of the, I guess, non-numbered page. Um, it starts with B, S T R permits shall be renewed annually. Operators must report on the prior year's occupancy at the time of renewal. What the hell does that mean and why do we need to do that?
I don't know. That was in the version.
That we stole from whoever we stole it from?
Yes.
Do we, I mean, I guess to me, if you're running your house out, I, why, why is it up to me on how many times you rented your house out or how much money you made on it? Or how many days it was in use. I, I personally don't need that information and I don't know that we need to ask the question. I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I just.
I can't think of a reason why we need to ask.
Yeah, it was just in what we were borrowing from here and there and.
So we could just, if, if we're happy with that, we can just say it, uh, S T R permit shall be renewed annually. And just strike through operators must report on prior year's occupancy. And just strike that out of this thing. If you're okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Um, and then partway down that first page under A, well, actually, under the second A, the capital A. It says, we're talking about violations. It says for the first and second violation within a twelve month period as determined by the code compliance officer. The shank, sanction shall be a warning notice. And then obviously under B, the third offense, it goes to you for potentially revoking their permit. I hate issuing the same people warning notices over and over again. It doesn't make any sense. I can see. The first one being a warning, the second one being a fine, and the third one, you might get your permit revoked. But if I've got a problem with you having fires in your burn pit because you don't have your burn pit marked. And, you know, also the landlord or the people renting it showed up and there's all this campfire wood sitting right next to the. And you know, also the landlord or the people renting it showed up and there's always campfire wood sitting right next to the burn pit with some charcoal light fluid. You know, maybe you should get more than a a warning on the second offense. So I would, I if if the board is concurrent. Minimal, I think the second offense should be a fine, but. We should at least put wordage in that the second offense may be a fine. And not, we're gonna give you seven hundred warnings. Because the offense could be. Severe and we're only gonna give him another warning. So I'd like to at least leave some kind of wordage that it may be a fine up to the code compliance officer.
Right, may rather than shall.
Yep, the same one. Maybe, well, list the first one will be a warning notice, the second one.
Right, not shall be.
Right. And that that helps that one for me, cuz I hate telling somebody the same thing over and over again. Now I'm gonna go off to your post. Which some of it's the same, so when you throw in the title twelve road driveway. Page three, you have blue line in here. That's uh middle of page says chapter twenty-five oh five permitting. Above that. Um this is where it comes into the um. The code compliance, he would say of the the violations. It gives us two options. It says for the first violation, the county attorney must issue a warning letter. Or we can go for the first violation, the code compliance officers.
From the RCW, number four is more of what we've been discussing.
So do we have to have three in there, or are we just planning on putting it as both? So that it could come from either one of those. I can't imagine the prosecutor wants to issue the warnings, but.
I don't think so, I mean.
But I I don't know if it's in the RCW, if that means it has to stay.
I'm not sure.
That might end up being a legal question.
Right, right. When we send it over for reviewing as to form.
Are you okay if we pull this section out?
Right, exactly, yeah.
And then down on the bottom of permitting. Um it discussed fees, but again, if we don't need public works fees in there, I will scratch that off in my edit page. The next page of uh chapter twenty-five oh six. Um after A, it talks about that first and second violation. So if we could edit that to what we said on the page before. Uh and that's all I had with the actual codage, potential changes.
And I don't even know, you know, twenty-five is the real number. I was just, you know, using a placeholder.
I didn't know if on your short-term rental certificate of compliance, you list all the things in here that the owner acknowledges. Do we need to add road meets title twelve STR standards? Um I would think we would need to put that in there, get in there somewhere. I did have a question. It says a heat detector is installed and attached in the attached garage and is in working order. What the hell is a heat detector and why is that in here?
It's new code that a heat detector gets installed in a garage, so that if something goes wrong, the alarms go off.
So this is kinda like a carbon monoxide detector that's now mandated by state law. This is not some bogus thing that we as a county made up and put in. This is new building code. That we have to follow that state. I just wanna make sure we're not adding a bunch of.
No, no, and we have someone on the west end who. His house burnt down originating from the garage and when he rebuilt. And he saw that note on his plan D's comment was, well, that would have been.
Would have been handing, well, that's why it's now a state law. And down in the, painted towards the bottom of that section. Um it says there's an up-to-date fire extinguisher in the kitchen. Um there's an up-to-date fire extinguisher installed on each floor. Can we add wordage in there that it's plainly visible?
We sure can.
So that it's not hiding under a bathroom cabinet that nobody's ever looked in. So there will be a plainly visible fire extinguisher installed. Um and that's all I had with potential changes to that.
And this was borrowed.
And then.
And tweaked from the uh one that Christian Rizzola gave me from San Juan.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see anything in there other than if there needed to be changes for the road, but. You're gonna have to have some kind of form that public works has to sign off on.
Right, right. And then our difference is that we talked about the notaries. Signature, having it notarized.
Oh, right. Still wanna notarize? Still think that's the way to go? I'm assuming yes.
I'm thinking.
Um and then for department, you short-term rental application. Um need to verify title twelve road standards for STRs. Needs added to that. It is a book that the county came up with, I don't know, a generation ago. That's just a handbook that explains to people how to live in the country. There might be cattle on your roadway. Um burn bans are in effect, what a burn ban is, how to be nice to your neighbors, just a little handbook. Um that we are currently working on reprinting to give away for free. So we figured it would be a good thing that when somebody puts their permit like this, we give them. A copy of that to leave for whoever might wanna read it. Um that rents the place, so they don't leave their house and go sixty miles an hour and hit a cow in the middle of the road.
Right, yeah, that's what I was just wondering, if it was something that would be downloadable or.
It's it's currently downloadable now, yes, but we're actually gonna print it in card back and give them away for free, so. Um people can have as many as they want and and take them, but yes, it's online and downloadable too. The burn ban one. I I think this is important. The problem is we'll never know what these dates are. So if somebody goes and applies for their yearly short-term rental permit and you hand up this. I'm afraid if you have any date on here, they're just gonna assume next year is the same date. So I would, I would really rather strike through the dates, you know, me and fires. I would rather just remove the dates and if you have to put some mortage down there that's um.
Dates determine yearly.
Dates determine yearly, check this website or something and show them where they can find. That information on the emergency management website and list the website and and then it's up to them to go check the thing. I mean, during the burn ban, once you have this information. Then if you wanna make one of these up and give it to people, that's fine, but I would imagine most people have probably got their permit for the next year in January. They're not waiting until June, so I just don't know how efficient that's.
Know that works.
And I can help with that.
And I can help with that, he says.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Off to your little makeup here, which I liked. Um who we are, you still have it in here that this is a place for your elevator pitch. If only you had a few seconds to pitch your products and services. I get it, I'm just saying, circle that and fill that in with something. Welcome to Clickatac County.
And so then it's like, are we doing that as like a pitch for the county as a whole? And then the contact, I'm assuming.
I would, I would put it as a about us, welcome to Clickatac County. I hope you enjoy your, you're, you know, partaking. You know, rafting or hiking or biking or whatever your heart's desire.
Act is just building, right? Okay, I was just double checking.
That was him red, too.
That was, that was red. But yeah, so to Lisa back there, our hope is that all these little things. Will be able to be provided and in a three-ring binder of sorts, so that you can just leave it on your coffee table. They get some browsing material and maybe they'll learn something. Maybe they'll go shopping somewhere in Clickatac County or rafting or hiking or whatever. Maybe they'll read to not hit a cow on the road.
Don't honk it.
Yeah, don't honk at the horse. Um other than that. This format will be submitted to the. Yeah, I didn't have any issues with the rest of it.
Yeah, the Cindy's been working with Paladin, but until they get something back to us, we don't know what this is gonna look like.
So it's gonna be whatever our software allows it to be.
Yeah, yeah. And then the uh good neighbor guide, that's kinda where. Kind of reiterating what everything else already says, but. Maybe they'll remember.
We're just gonna have to have a number of those good neighbor guides printed out, stapled together, so it be, you know, they get a peachier and. Whatever with their permit and it has one in it. Um I don't want them to have to go looking for it. It has a tips for country living in it. We give them every piece of document. That we told them they need to provide, we gave them to.
Can I back up just one? I just, you covered all of mine. I'm all the way back at the top and I'm trying to find it again now. Uh the blue that was added in about uh pets. Pets shall be secured, excessive barking is not allowed.
Page one uh.
Number six, yeah, yeah, um. What does that tie us to? If, I mean, if we say those things, then they call, does George have to go out?
Technically, I, and I was thinking about this one myself, because we don't have any county laws in most areas. About dogs or whatnot, so even if you have excessive barking. I guess they can call the sheriff for a noise complaint if it's over a certain decibel. Compliance gonna do, cuz there's no law that says your dog can't bark.
Yeah, right, and then you know, it says it shall be operated in a way to prevent disturbances to neighboring properties. Then it's their problem. Uh as an operator, I assume I'm gonna tell people, get your dog on leash or. That dog's gotta go cuz it's barking. Yeah, I do.
We're pulling it.
So.
Pet shall be discur- secured, excessive barking is not allowed and cleaning up after your pets is required. Is all being stricken.
Then I thought she was saying something else too.
I think there was something else about pets in there too, so.
Well, that in the guide there is, but um.
I mean, that was in the guide.
But they shall be operated in such a manner.
That first part, uh shall be operated in a manner that will prevent disturbances to neighboring properties. I think that's fine.
Okay, okay, just take out the next part, okay. Make sure I'm on the right page here.
Anything else?
Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss any things, so I don't have too many more of these before we.
I think.
Ask the public to weigh in. And pick it apart. So you know they're thinking of things that we haven't thought of yet.
Said we need the other departments to chime in. Do we want the other departments to chime in, so I can make changes on the ones?
Um yeah, technically, if. While there's a planning department and a public works department, did you guys see anything that raises suspicion or that you think needs to add or needs to remove? Or yeah, I'm not seeing it there either. HR, do you have any problems with?
Mister Chairman.
Yes, go ahead. Mister King?
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't hear. Were they done in the back of the room? I couldn't hear them.
Um nobody in the room had any issues with what's currently before us?
Yeah, if you allow it, I'll follow up with uh Lynn on language about the burn bans to make it clear. And then them posting the current. Clickatac County burn ban notifications. I think we can, and referring them to the website, I think we can clear all that up, so it is uh relevant, no matter what time of the year it is.
That works. Cuz that was my biggest, one of my biggest issues with this is tourists don't know anything about fires. And I don't need them coming and burning up half my county. Um so if you could work on that, that would be great. Um next up. I, if if you don't have any further changes with. I think we should schedule a time, a Tuesday, a Thursday, reach out to the general public, to renters. Um that are currently renting, to neighbors of, we've heard of one, that hates their neighbor's short-term rental. Um and have one of these discussions now that we have this closer to what we're thinking. Um to let them pick through this document and um. Suggest anyway, uh potential changes. Uh before we go forward with a public hearing and all that kinda mumbo jumbo.
So do we wanna uh, excuse me. Schedule like a day workshop and then an evening workshop?
Do you think you need it or just the public hearing?
I can say the hard part for me is if the the renters are all working at the hospital or something during the day and have no time to chine in. But in the same regard. I guess there will be time during a public. Erin Quinn has her hand up. Erin, go ahead, Erin.
Hey, I just, sorry, I don't think David made it up there today, and so I'm gonna actually. Have him um email Lynn some of our comments, cuz I can give them to you really quickly, but I am not the subject matter expert and I can't. Maybe speak to them as well as he would. Um I know he had some concerns about just some language that was a little bit different than. Um like in section three, it talked about water and sanitation, and he wanted to change sanitation to be very specifically. Um some language that was specific to what the, what health could actually uh do or or have way in on. And I think there was some further concerns about. The two guests per bedroom, there was an additional language about having up to an additional three guests. Uh so it was, I think it's written as two overnight guests per bedroom with an additional three overnight guests. Which actually exceeds uh the septic code, which I believe is determined by WAC, and so to have that conversation as well. And I think, I think those were our two big ones, but again, I'll just have him maybe touch base with Lynn by email.
Yeah, if you could, because those are, those are big ones. I thought these, um at least the first one with the number of people. Had already been investigated by him as what is allowed under WAC, but. If WAC doesn't allow that, we'll just have to change this to whatever WAC allows.
I believe the version that we had last time did have the two, two guests per bedroom. I, so I don't know if that just got. I don't know if that's different language or a different version that we've seen before.
No more than two overnight guests per bedroom, plus an additional three overnight guests. Shall be accommodated at any one time, and he, and so he's saying the additional three is new?
To this document, yeah. I don't think we saw that before, but you know, there's been a couple of versions, so it's hard to say.
I added was what's in blue.
That's what I thought. Cuz I think that was there for the last six, eight months, was more, cuz they might sleep on the height of bed or, you know.
But then does that exceed?
But if it exceeds the WAC, it, we can allow it, whether they do it on their own and violate county code, that's out of that.
And and so I'll have him send Lynn that reference, so that she has that first anyway. So I apologize if we missed that in the, in the previous versions, but.
That might be in opposition with the RCW. A conflict, so you have to pick which one.
Well.
Well, the WAC would be the WAC.
Typically, the more stringent applies.
Yeah, even if this says this and they say that, that one is the one that applies cuz it's the most stringent.
Right, right.
Uh so yeah, if that, whatever he sells you, sends you. I would like for you to verify the WAC, look it up yourself, make sure what he sends you is correct with. What we're thinking it is, and if that's the case, just add it to the, just make the change.
Right, okay.
And redline it again, so we remember the change we just made. And then, yeah, whatever his other concern is with the definition of sanitation. Um have him reach out to Lynn and just do the same thing with that.
Red water and septic, and I'm like, there's more to it than just the septic, so then I made it water and sanitation, but. Right, red water and septic, and I'm like, there's more to it than just the septic, so then I made it water and sanitation, but.
He might want just more defined area of what it is, so that's fine.
Yeah, he had some specific verbiage and I apologize that I can't remember right now how he.
Okay.
Literally an hour ago, what he told me, so.
Not a problem.
I'll have him send that in an email, and then I just, um, if I just express. One more concern about this process from a public health standpoint, um, is how. When we become involved in this process, how we're going to pay for that? Would we bill the person as their permit, or will the permit cost cover our time? And then will we review, will my department receive some of that revenue? And certainly that's not something we need to resolve today, but just to throw that out there as well.
The, the last time we discussed this, um, it was my understanding from Mister Kavanaugh. That as long as there is a house that is permitted, currently permitted, and currently permitted to have water and septic that. Public health would not need to sign off on somebody getting an SDR permit. So unless that's changed. Um.
I don't believe it's changed, but you know, if they're, if we're gonna verify, I guess it comes down to if you verify. If you're having them sign off that they meet code replant, code requirements, or if we're being asked to verify that they're meeting code requirements. If that makes sense.
Okay, good question.
I will be making sure that it was a properly permitted dwelling. Now, if that was before permit requirements, then I don't quite have the same authority, but. Um, if it was built.
So I guess, I guess Erin's question then becomes, who's gonna check to make sure it has water and a septic? And are they going to get a staff time hourly fee of fifty-five dollars while they do that research? To make sure it actually is permitted?
At the first, that's gonna come under the two, two hours that we talked about, because if I can't find a certificate of occupancy or permit. And I go to the assessors records and it says it was built in two thousand, a permit should have been issued. Now they're gonna have to get a permit before we can give them an STR permit. So they're gonna have to go through health for water and septic, we're gonna route like we would for any other building permit.
So then, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Erin.
So, so then at that point, we would charge them our a hundred and fifty dollars septic assessment like that. Uh, I think, and then the thirty-five dollar water fee.
Yeah, cause then they're gonna have to make it a legal structure.
Okay, so technically what Lynn, what you're saying is during your already hundred and fifty dollars or whatever in here for your permit. You're gonna be able to check to make sure they have septic and water as part of the permit.
I'm not making sure they have septic and water, I'm making sure they have a properly permitted dwelling, which for us. That's having Aaron's department say, yep, they have water and septic, that's public work saying, yep, they have a driveway. And that's planning saying, yep, they've met zoning requirement.
So Erin, do you need more than that for you to sign off from the health department? More than just Lynn looking to see if they have a properly permitted structure?
No, but I just, I wanna make sure there's some contingency planning around the, the one-off case. That takes, you know, my department a huge amount of time and making sure that we have the money to pay staff to do that.
Well, I guess under the fee schedule part of this, um, we can always add a piece in there. Um, that says some generic number and any other fees applicable by other departments to facilitate your permit.
Yeah, something.
I think that would be wise.
Speaking heads nod, so hopefully you wrote that down while my brain was speaking it, because I probably won't remember. Any other fees applicable uh by other departments, blah, 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 blah. As I see her case, ninety-five percent of them will be no charge. But there might be five percent that require an hour of staff time and the rest of the taxpayers shouldn't pay for that one hour of staff time. You might have to open your wall and pay the sixty-five dollar. Much closer. Um, Lisa, I'll ask you a question. When we have um, a meeting and bring back people like yourself and whatnot. To get your take on this, the question is, should we do it during the day and at night? Or is during the day enough, we're knowing whatever document we come up with, we're still gonna have public hearings. And have a day and a night for that, so does the work group need to be a night, or can we just do that in a day?
Or do you think we're getting close enough that a work group is gonna be redundant? That a public hearing with comments just gonna cover it anyhow?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, is I think this now is at the point where it's ready for public comment, right? Um, um. You know, you, you guys have done a lot of work. I mean, I came in front of the county commissioners about eight years ago and brought them information about short-term rentals. And said, this is a, a great thing that's happening in our county, you know, and they just kinda looked at me and said, why are you here? And I said, because this is not a problem, and I wanna make sure it's not a problem, you know? So here we are, eight years later, you guys are finally putting a structure down in place, um, so I appreciate the work that you're doing. Um, because people have been um renting out homes, I mean, essentially since the beginning of time. And um, so yeah, no, from what I see here, um, I think it's ready for public comment, right? Because I think you mentioned someone that is upset that their neighbor's renting out, well, that's one person.
Right.
Out of multiple experiences, so I think that it's good that we just kinda have it open to everyone. Um, and I know when I was, um, when White Salmon was putting theirs together. Uh, they had their public comment time in the evening during a regular city council meeting. Um, so I, I would recommend that is in, in evening meeting, uh, where people are allowed to chime in on that. Um.
I think we regularly do hearings during the day.
If we're ready to go out to hearing.
Okay.
Uh, and we're kind of saying, this is maybe our final document?
Yeah.
Then we'll go to public hearing, we'll do it at one o'clock or one thirty, and again at six o'clock at night.
Okay.
And then if we just adopt this.
Mm-hmm.
After that, then we'll just sign it. If we're gonna change it based on comment, we'll probably end up going back to another public hearing with the changes that we made.
Right.
So that was the part that I was thinking, do we need a working group? Does this need changed?
I worry about a working group kind of being redundant, and there's so many people that weren't here during all these open times. That now don't know everything we've been through, and we're gonna recreate it again, and they're gonna ask for things we can't do.
Or the dog barking, cause that was a comment by a neighbor.
Mm-hmm.
That facilitated its way in there, and okay.
I think.
All right, let's just go to public hearing and, and um, yeah, let's do that one.
Okay.
Well, let's, you make the changes that we've made.
Have another.
Give us one last little look at it.
And then should we?
And then we'll worry about posting.
Or form before the public hearing?
Yep.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yep. Uh, Jeff, again, have your hand up, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but this is my first run at this, and I get uh Lori's. You know, comment that we don't wanna reinvent the wheel again and start over, but um, so if we're not gonna go to internal workshop again. We're gonna go to public hearing or so on, I just wanna make sure that a few things that I have on my list to give to Lynn. Uh, the board is okay with.
Oh, yeah. Just got his time, tell me.
Yeah.
Sir, the plan is to have Lynn modify it with the changes we've made today, have her talk to you. Change the wording on the bird band that you feel better with, then we'll come back and have one more of these workshops for maybe ten minutes. If we don't change it again, um, and get it to that more complete document that we all say, okay, now we're ready. To submit it for legal opinion and go out to a public hearing after that, but I do wanna have one more of these little fifteen minuters. Um, even though this is now turned into a half an hour one, um, just to make sure everybody gets their last second input before we go to a public hearing.
But if there's more than just the burn ban from Jeff's side.
As I said, I wanna look at it before we go out to a public hearing.
So just one thing, what I mentioned to you in my board update, that we're trying to move forward in several different areas, the planning department and the building department. Would be the inclusion in the permitting process of the emergency response information form for emergency management.
Oh, yeah.
Nine, nine-one dispatch and the U C has that information if needed in an emergency response, if you're okay with. You giving that to Lynn and having her put it in.
Yes, I would have her put that in there, but again, since it's a new item, make sure it's in blue or whatever, so we can see the added changes.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, so let's do that, let's take these changes and additions, add them, we'll schedule this again in a whatever week or two. Um, look at that document, and then if we don't have any more changes for that document, we'll send it over for legal opinion. And once we get it back from there, public hearing, we'll schedule public hearing.
Uh, commissioners, if I may just plant two seeds.
Sure.
Um, one, um, the tax dollars, right, the county has been collecting tax dollars on short-term rentals for many years. Um, those have been earmarked for the um, um, essentially promoting tourism in the county. Um, I was told that those dollars had to be used for promoting tourism.
That's what I was told too.
Okay, and, and I just wasn't, um, um, it, you know, it's, it's a lot of tax money coming into our county, which is great. Um, but I didn't know if some of those dollars could be used to offset any additional costs. Um, so I'm not quite sure where this guidance is, if it's an RCW or, you know, I'd love to know the source of um. Why these dollars have to be earmarked for tourism, I don't know if you know the ma- background on that, and then the other thing to think about is just current hosts. Um, right, if suddenly, um, you know, as we move towards um. This process right here, you know, some people already have reservations going into next summer. Um, so I guess kinda start thinking ahead of how, how is that going to be handled? You know, someone who's been hosting for multiple years is suddenly being told that something needs to be done to their driveway. Um, are we shutting them down? Are they gonna be given a grace period? Um, so I just wanted to plant those seeds, like current hosts who may already have reservations into next year. What, what will the expectation be? Will they be grandfathered? Will there be a grace period? So I just wanna plant that before the public hearing, because I guarantee you that will, that'll be a big question on everyone's minds.
Hmm, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Uh, any other additional comments for this before we go back and edit again? There are none, thank you, go edit again. You're doing great, keep up the good work, will be done eventually.
Hey, we're closer than we've ever been.
Yeah, at least some of them may be legal sometime soon. Well, I'll pack my lease, I'll talk about that.
She's trying.
It's about as long as I could drag that conversation out, so we, we still got forty-five minutes or a half hour anyway, so. Hey, that's right, you said Lynn needed this much time, so we should make her come forward and kill the next half an hour before our, our next discussion. Well, it's, it's one of those, ideally, you book the cities first. Because Lynn can start at two or three or three-thirty, and then, then we don't have to wait. Cause they're already here, so ideally, any of the outside entities start at one-thirty-five. Kind of scenario, and then in-house entities finish up, cause we can always call them to show up early. So anything, we have our public hearings and then outside presentations, whether that's the cities or somebody that doesn't work here. Uh, and then finish up with the people that work here. Um, so we'll move off into board pending for this Mitch.
You have.
Um, did you guys all have a chance to, since we're meeting with the fair board on Thursday to talk about funding? For projects, did you guys have time to read the PA's opinion requests on the duly funds? I'm kinda curious to see if we're on the same page or not on the same page. Because it sounds like it's the fair board's opinion. That the fair board was granted the funding. From the duly estate and the fair board can do whatever the fair board wants with the money it received from the duly estate. Now, none of that makes sense, because it's on county property and the county has to pay for O and M of all those things. And the county has to sign for the um, bid to go out. And the commissioners have to approve, so I mean, none of the argument makes sense that it's all up to the fair board. Otherwise, they could sign their own bid opening, they could build their own tanks, and then they'd be doing it on their property, so.
Uh, there's a choice in there, it looks like to me, one quarter share of the residue of the estate. To Click Attack County Gold No Washington or to the organization that is responsible for management of the Click Attack County Fair.
Correct. That is the count.
Correct, but it says or to. So it looks like you have a choice there, and the choice has always been to let the fair board manage it.
I guess, wh- what are you asking for in handout?
Well, I guess my question is, anything the fair board builds there, you're gonna be responsible for fixing going down the road.
Right.
So if they wanna build a new livestock barn, because they don't care about fixing the new li- or the current livestock barn. You're gonna be responsible for paying for the roofs on both of them. Um, how about it? Uh, if, if they don't wanna use. The duly funds to say repair the roof of the existing livestock barn. Because they know you're gonna pay for it, then they can build, get more bang with their buck, and I think that's what's currently happening. And in the meantime, the taxpayers are being left carrying the bag. Because of. Um, what I deem as a lack of a long-term economic plan for the fairgrounds. To turn it into something more than just a fair. Uh, to actually use that space for a convention center, for a motorsports plaza. For a, to me, it, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to put in a new livestock barn and tear down the horse stalls. And then when you're done, rebuild the horse stalls twenty feet away. Maybe you forgot the building in the wrong spot, why are the commissioners not in the loop on the planning of their own property?
I'm going to weigh in that because of the history, too little, too late. I think involvement was offered over all these years, the fair board's been operating. We've always had a goodwill relationship with the fair board, they've always been champion for the great job that they do. They've moved forward with this in, in the meetings were open, but now at the eleventh hour, we're, we're making a change. And that bothers me, we've done that before with other things where we work on it, work on it, work on it, other than the fair boards. And then on the eleventh hour, we change it, and then we have a big upset.
As I said, I'm not necessarily looking to change and say no to your livestock barn.
What I'm saying is we should be looking at what you're asking for from here on out. And developing a relationship with the fair board that sends us off on that path now, because before, nobody was involved.
Right, that's what I'm asking for.
Okay.
It's asking for, if they're on the agenda on Thursday, talking about their long-range plan for the fairgrounds. We need to make sure that that's also the county's long-range plan for the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
Cause if it isn't, there needs to be some conversations.
So I think, like I said.
If our long-range plans for the fairgrounds incorporate, we either need to get a roof on the livestock barn or it's gonna collapse. Would you guys like to be a part of the problem or a part of the solution?
So attending their meetings in the future and having those conversations be important.
So that. Their meeting.
Correct, just like we go to other meetings, just like we go to other board meetings, just like we go to city or uh, community council meetings.
They are.
Designs and ideas for.
Of a sense, a board created by the county to facilitate the county's work. Which is operative affair. So, how did we all three go to their meeting?
We don't. You attend, someone attends and comes back and reports.
Interesting, okay.
Um, that's how we work with Dallas Board on the community center. And they bring their projects forward and we work forward with them. We've just always the. The fair board's always been so involved with the county and the county is so intermixed and. Related to or daily working with the fair board that I just don't think we established a really formal relationship.
I guess my problem is, is the way I see those funds, I see the. I see a, and I have to be careful I word this. Not wanting to maintain the projects they currently have, but to build new ones that I'm not, once this money runs out, I don't have the money to fix them.
But I wouldn't assume that. I'd get involved with them in the future and make sure it goes the right way. So they understand how we see that money and how we feel about it going forward.
Well, that's why I'm trying to have this discussion to see how we feel about it.
Thank you.
I would say that we, the Board of County Commissioners, have delegated our authority to the fair board and have over the course of many, many years. And we act as the fiscal agent for those funds. But for the most part, we've delegated that authority. They've come up with their own long-term capital plan. They have talked about it. They've talked about it for years. They've planned for it for years. They've moved down that path. All the while, every year, also checking in with the Board of County Commissioners as well. If we would like to go a different way or would like to change that relationship, that's a conversation we had, but at this time, I see nothing wrong with it. It's not broke. Why would we need to fix it? If you have a different vision or outlook for the fair or what matters or those grounds, Commissioner Christopher. I would say get involved with the fair board and do it through that.
Correct, but I don't, I wouldn't say that I have a different vision for the fair. I would like to look after the grounds as the county. Which owns the fairgrounds and uses the fairgrounds for more things than just the once a year fair. That I personally think by us delegating that duty to an organization that thinks of one event all year long. Is not getting the best bang for the buck of facilitating the actual fair grounds. Or other purposes, but. If I'm the odd man out on that thinking, that's fine. I don't have a problem, nor do I throw a temper tantrums. Um, so I I would just be the odd man out and. Fine, we will continue doing it the way that it's being handled now and.
I would, I would say that we need to have very clear conversation with the with the fair board about the future finances of Clickat County. And that the fair board is going to have to take a more active role in in. The maintenance of that uh, facility. I could also say that while we're talking about that. Uh, the fairgrounds need to pay for itself. The fairgrounds need to pay for itself until the Cub Scouts will come in or anybody else comes in and they want to use it for free. And that is a choice that the Board of County Commissioners have made to not put the money into. Maintenance and repair, but rather to give everybody a free ride because it's for the kids.
I don't know how many kids you can give a free thousand dollar thing to that's going to cover a five hundred thousand dollar roof. It takes. Not a whole lot of way this county is ever going to fund a five hundred thousand dollar roof coming up in our budget. Whether it's on the plan for next year or not, my guess is ten plus years away. Um, because there's no way this county is going to be able to fund a five hundred thousand dollar roof unless the fair board wants to take an active involvement in repairing the buildings that they use. Only at their events. In use of the duly funds to do it. Otherwise, you're going to have buildings that start collapsing from lack of maintenance. Um, and that's up to this county how they want to handle it because. There's no way next year's budget, you guys are going to pass five hundred thousand dollars to replace that roof.
And and I think to be fair with the fair board. Um, they had good intentions and they were doing a long range plan. But we need, as the fiscally responsible people, to sit down with them, like Jake said, and have that long range talk with them and say. Great, we love your ideas and where you're going, but now we have these problems. Here's where our budget will go. So how are you going to?
That's the question I'm hoping we have on Thursday, but I definitely don't want to go into Thursday. And have that discussion with how are we going to supposedly pay five hundred thousand dollars for a roof on a livestock barn when I ain't got five hundred thousand dollars? And then have you guys say, oh, I don't have a problem with the way it's running now. Dan's just a bad guy. So I want to make sure, where are we going on Thursday? Or should we just cancel the event on Thursday? The discussion on Thursday and continue with the status quo. Because if it isn't a concise board going into Thursday, we might as well just cancel it because I'll have enough of a side.
No, I have no problem having budget talks with them.
I think having discussions very appropriate.
It's kind of like a mini department. We've already had those hard talks.
Not with them though. That's all, that's a whole other baby. Is that's the, I mean, and we fund things and I, we have things funded. Thankfully, we now have the. The drainage purchase, the bleachers upgrade. The beer garden cover, we're going to handle all those things fine. Technically. Should that have been handled out of duly funds the last ten years probably?
So I guess, where did the the bleacher covering and all this stuff come from? Was that all a long range plan? Was that, was that designed or was that because it came up after? The.
I mentioned it after demolition derby and. Um, I talked to some people from the fair board reached out to me. Um, some of them had these same issues. Um, while some of the fair board has different issues and different plans and different drives. Some of them agree with the general public. One of them actually proposed that the friends of the fair might have money. To help pitch in for the bleacher or for the beer garden cupboard. Uh, but next thing I know, I look at the list and it's actually included on the list. So we've never had those conversations.
So how did it get on the list?
No idea. Other than I'm assuming public works heard discussion. From us and the general public's discussion on Facebook and thought it was a viable plan to make. I did not have any personal conversations with any of them or pressure anybody to put it up.
So I guess. We're adopting the list, but should that money be going towards the replacement of a roof rather than building new things?
No. That that would not be my vote. The general public has asked for the money to be spent on something the general public's wanted. Which the general public has wanted this for ten years and nobody's ever given a crap to listen to the general public. So we can continue on with the same way in politics in Clickat County and that's not listening to the general public. Or you can listen to the general public. I'll be voting to listen to the general public.
So. How many of the general public were in here in front of the Board of County Commissioners saying this is what they want?
And I consider the pair of people the general public. It's a. Pretty big valuable happy group that we have going on out there.
None of the general public were here saying that because they all trusted me to say it for them. That's what I do every Tuesday. So with that, we've already approved the capital and non-capitalist. Are you asking to amend the capital and non-capitalist?
No, I'm just trying to ask the question because. It seems like the fair board who's been managing the duly funds, who uses the duly funds technically every year. As a plan, it seems like you're you're asking for that plan to potentially change.
No. No, because me. And the public's wanting to add grandstand seating and um. Handicap rails to get up the stairs so old people don't fall over. And a cover for the beer garden have nothing to do with the duly funds. Or the fair. Has to do with the roadie, which is not covered by the duly funds.
So you weren't saying that we should fix the the roof rather than build the new building?
No, that is covered by duly funds.
Right.
The upgrades I mentioned are upgrades the county should be paying for to county facilities. That are not covered by another funding source that nobody wants to use.
What do you mean that nobody wants to use?
We, we don't have another funding source to fix the A D A handicap access to keep us from being sued. When me and Sheriff Songer are helping people up stairs because there's no wheelchair ramp. Um, the duly funds can't be used for that.
Right.
So. The improvements that are in our capital and non-capitalist, besides the livestock barn doors. Are improvements to keep us to be sued and to appease the general public. The roof of the livestock barn is something that could be paid for by taxpayers or it's something that could be paid for by duly fund. Because its sole purpose is to house livestock, which is that once a year time at the fair. So it actually has two available funding sources. We're just choosing to only use one of them. And if that's county's choice, that's county's choice. I'm not pushing. I just. I know where the future budgets are going. And I don't see any way. That the capitalist next year includes five hundred thousand dollars for a roof at fairgrounds. I I just, there's no way. I mean, if it does, fine. I'm very curious to see who you guys lay off. To do it. Um, five people, pick them somewhere. Um, because that's the choices we're going to be making going forward with the budget if we continue to refill vacant positions. Um, and they're going to be hard choices and I'm not going to have a part of it.
Just to clarify for me, that roof is in a state where it needs to be done next year?
That will be a budget discussion next year. I don't know where we're getting the money for it.
But it has to be, it's at that age that it. That has to be done next year. I mean, how long, is that in a six-year plan with road department or where is that?
I don't know how long it's been on the plan. That's a, that's a them question.
I guess we should invite Brutus or whatever he wants to be called today down.
I don't tell him what, don't, don't advertise that on there. No, he is, he is going to be in the room, I'm assuming, for the. Fairgrounds talks. So we have on our. Capital plan, we have the drainage improvements that we talked about this morning for twenty grand. Um. And. The um. Cover beer gardens and A D A stuff and so a total of seventy grand. For the fair grounds this year. Next year, it's going from seventy grand to five hundred grand to put on earth. So again, you just went up four hundred thirty thousand dollars. Getting it from somewhere.
Guess the question should be asked of. The public works director.
Or it's going to get put off another year.
Yeah.
Um. And then on the non-cap. Is the twenty thousand for the A D A grandstand seating? Twenty five thousand to replace a livestock barn door. Um, and that's all there is for fairgrounds. Next year. And like the livestock barn door, that's I'm sure what the fairground wants to spend. That's kind of what they pick their projects. Next year is thirty grand to repair south side green stands. The next year is another barn door. Um. And bathrooms and fans and crack seal parking lot. And replace small bleachers with metal bleachers. I don't know what that is. Thought they were all metal bleachers. Well, next year demo and remove residents? I didn't know we had a residence.
Yes.
Why are we not turning that into an office space?
Uh, it's been a residence. So what we used to do is is someone in the public work side would take care of the fairgrounds. And then we would let them live out there and so they would keep watch on it at night.
I remember that now. But why, why are we, why are we turning it down now? Is it like unlivable or something? Nobody wants to do that anymore?
I haven't been in it, but I always heard it wasn't, wasn't a.
Friendly.
Environment for families.
Makes sense. Okay. No, that makes sense. No, I guess my, my argument for the fair board and my only thought for the fair board is I think they need to think. Just like all the rest of our little departments. Need to think a little more holistically county budget wise. With. Their funding source, if the county so deems that their funding is. To make sure that they can cover the O N M on the properties that they use because I don't think counties can be able to fund it. And we can say that we're going to fund it next year. Uh, but when the budget comes next year and you see what it looks like. I don't see there's any way, shape or form that this county is authorized and half a million dollars to put on a roof base. And that's going to be some awful hard conversations to have with the employees and.
Is Jeff invited?
Will be me.
For the meeting next week or uh, Thursday? Public Works?
Yes. So that's what I'm getting at. That's what that my thought for that meeting was. Um, was to get them hopefully thinking a more holistic approach to the fairgrounds. And and then with us figuring out. Who's covering the barn roof? Are we paying the barn roof? Are we paying part of the back barn roof? Are we going to pay for the whole barn roof and let them use up the grant? For their building? Are we going to use the grant for the barn roof and not their building? Um, we need to know what the heck's going on in the long term improvements. Before we start having roofs cave in. Um, anyway, yeah, we still got ten minutes to kill. Next topic. Beat that one in there. Editor. Selling ice cream? I would buy one if you're selling ice cream.
I got really good ice cream too.
Yeah, we, we had to kill a half an hour. We got done early, so we're just kind of. Small talking, waiting for three fifteen to arrive. Have we heard Benjamin Wade Salmon trying to up in person or zoom?
Uh, they did not specify, but I did send them.
Um, Commissioner Anderson, you've been leading this charge. I'm assuming you're gonna, I'm hoping. That you're going to take the conversation.
I think you should do it.
I don't.
You're the chair.
Yeah. I'll just say to the cities, hey, what do you want to do? I'm fine with that. Whatever you want. I'll sign it.
I don't think I'd ever leave a open-ended statement like that.
Maybe a five hundred thousand dollar livestock roof.
Maybe the city wants the fairgrounds.
Uh, you should do that. The city should annex the fairgrounds. That would be awesome.
Had a discussion with Ty about. They're out to there.
Annex Clarot is his property? Yeah, that would annex the fairgrounds. I don't get it.
Well, the city already owns the airport on the other side, so.
We're going to have to set up an airport district. That and that's, that's part of that whole.
Right.
An airport district? What do you need an airport district for? I know, but what's the district? What, what is an airport district?
I think what it is, we have landowners on both sides. It's so narrow. As far as the actual property of the airport. And we've gone into negotiations to try to buy. Land along those sides or at least lease it. Or cut agreements for those two. Uh, one of them is down Hurley. He did a little cheap county. And uh, one other uh. When it broke up like this other family that owns part of that property, but they're willing to. Lease it or let us have. Use of it. Because it's not going to be in the front for hangers things if we don't. Push out a little bit.
So the airport district isn't like creating a tax district or something for airport projects. It's just, you're just expanding airport size and.
That's all. It's just, that's, it definitely makes what that property. Isn't useful. I hope one day we'll have a.
Is your fuel farm going yet? Is your fuel farm going yet?
I'm not sure. They, they've got it all and the fuel is there. Uh, equipment is there, but there's.
The fuels there?
Tronics, they haven't set yet. If we're going to have a kind of a. If we're gonna have a kind of a.
You're gonna miss flying season if you fill up.
I know. We still really wish we had the diesel as well. Until we get that airport. Straightened out, there's, it's just not a good idea to even attempt to jet late in there. No, helicopters are doing flying.
We've got a regional airport right there with trucks and everything else.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't be too worried about it.
And that normally when DNR comes in, they bring it.
Need places for airplanes to park.
I doubt.
The ramp space is all used up by a bunch of airplanes that haven't moved in years.
Been a long time. Well, I have kind of count those uh. Existing. Structures. As a housing museum piece and they're all airplane museum pieces. They're pretty old things.
So people just park their airplanes out there? You don't have to pay to park your airplane at the airport without? If you don't have a hanger? You might have to be self-sufficient, yeah. Well then, you know, I, I don't think people that own airplanes are short on cash. So charging them for use of facilities should not be. Uh, an extremist thought.
Most people go home airplanes in their. Later stages of life and they've had the same airplane for fifty years and they don't have a.
And again, I'm just talking as the general public. Uh, which has a different way of thinking than some people. That's a lack of subsidization would be.
Did you, um, a question? Did you read this? And talk about it or did you have a discussion with the prosecutor?
Nice for that.
So we probably need to talk. We probably need to talk. When you read it. Language intent of the world, the management agreement between Clickdak County and the Fair Board. As well as case law and statutes establishing the principal agent relationship of the county to the Fair Board. So we, we. Along with this says. Are we responsible for the fair?
Yes, IRCW.
Are, are we responsible? Are we managing it and doing it? Who's doing?
Um, it's our responsibility under state law.
And that's not what I'm asking. Who's been doing? And reporting back to us.
The Fair Board, yeah, we can designate somebody to do it. And that's what the county has done, is designated somebody else to run.
So everything in here tells me they have their discussion. And I'm not bantering for them. I'm, I'm reading this. In the intent of the law for what this says.
Well, I unfortunately have to agree with prosecutor.
Well, that is, you're interpreting wrong what he said in this document.
No.
Yeah.
If.
Cause I just read what he wrote.
I guess I would look at it as this way. If the intent of the law or of the intent of the duly funds. Was that those funds go straight to the Fair Board? Then they'd be in a bank account. Managed by the Fair Board. They wouldn't have to go out to bid on a project and get our signature off on it because they don't need our discretion or opinion or nothing because it's their funds. It wouldn't be in our budget. It wouldn't be in our funds and it wouldn't, well.
And if you wanna change it, you could set it up that way. It, it was quasi setup weird all these years, but unfortunately that's what it's been all these years. And this opinion says that's what it is. You have to read the whole sentences. So, so it'll get you into an argument you don't wanna be in.
Oh, I'm not trying to kid into an argument, buddy.
Well, no, I'm saying not for me.
Well, I'm not trying to get in an argument with Fair Board either. I'm just trying to, I guess. The Fair Board needs to know what they can expect in the way of improvements at the fair from this county. Going forward with the budget constraints that we currently have.
They do.
And those improvements are a hell of a lot less than they're currently getting. Um, so that's, that's kind of what I'm coming from. They, exactly.
And like.
And we can kick that can down the road like the passport.
No, we're not going to. We can't.
Um, or we can have an honest conversation with people and talk about hard things.
We don't have that luxury. Because our, our money's dwindling.
We knew it just gets up.
Got handed to us not to have that luxury.
That's what I'm saying. Well, that's what I'm trying to do is not kick that can down the road. To where all of a sudden it was all, how come you didn't know? Well, no, we did know. We just chose not that.
Well, we're gonna act.
So. We still have one minute left. I don't know if everybody's showing in person or not.
Oh, we got Mayor Catherine. Is Pat gonna make it?
No.
That emergency. Lisa, did you make copies of the example? That you got? You sent?
The, uh, no, I was going to just ask you to go through example that. That the costs.
Yeah. Yeah, make, make copies for everyone real quick.
All right, then we'll wait for her to make copies.
Yes, we can. We can start.
Um, yeah, we wanna start. Um, three fifteen, the next discussion is a meeting with municipalities. To discuss municipal court costs agreement. Um, so apparently Commissioner Anderson chaired. Uh, working with the cities to come up with a new agreement for municipal court costs and some of the cities had some issues. So we're here to try to figure out what issues, what the problem is. Um, what do we do going forward? Where are we? Open floor, open round table, jump to the mic.
Okay, wanna get more chairs up here? Who's joining?
She's like, I'm all in.
Um, can I grab a few more?
Sure.
I mean, I'll just. Municipalities plural.
Yep, it's municipalities plural. We all need to know what's going on and what's going through your brain.
Start with an introduction of everyone.
Chris Lance, today I have my city attorney for the city of Bingen hat on.
Your city hat on? Thank you, sir.
I've got many hats, but that's what I'm wearing today.
Uh, let's see, and then also I'll just, I can do round robin to Krista. Looney, Lonnie, sorry.
That's okay.
Do that and Troy Rayburn, uh, city administrators for Bingen and White Salmon respectively. And then, hi guys, my name's Marla Keith. I'm the mayor for White Salmon. We all know each other, but in the interest of formality. And Mayor Cannon.
And we have Mayor Q with online, it looks like.
Yep, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, we can. So what'd you come up with?
So I think to set the stage, uh, the introduction gave a little bit of a capture, but I think to build the whole picture of. Um, why we're before you. So about eighteen months ago, we had started conversations with Commissioner Anderson. Our understanding was he was the point person. Uh, working on initiating dialogue with the cities about the best way to share court costs. Uh, we went through quite a few rounds of meetings and reviews of draft, uh. Agreements of what a proposed interlocal could look like. We obviously went into last year, the twenty twenty-three budget. Planning to pay the cost that we had verbally been agreeing to. And so we were taken by surprise when we saw the ordinance. That was passed by the commissioners last month, which did not have any, uh, we were not aware that it was coming before you. And there had never been follow-up on the interlocals that we had sent back. And our understanding is that they were awaiting county review. And so when the wording in this ordinance. Doesn't seem to match anything that we had been, well, the key points that we had been discussing for eighteen months. Uh, we felt like it was probably in everyone's best interest to come here in person and have a conversation. Um, because I'm sure that everyone's goal is the same, which is to accurately capture the costs that need to be contributed to by cities and counties. But also an understanding of, I guess, choose a word from the newspapers' coverage of this issue equitable. Um, because I think that by definition, maybe we are not really there in terms of equity of cost share. Uh, so. I don't know. I think my first question would just be, are the, is the full board aware of? The interlocal that had been proposed and furnished by the cities back to the county? And that might be a good starting point to just talk through what the differences are.
Do we have a second page for other than Golden Dale?
No.
This is just the example.
This is just a Golden Dale example. Got it. Um, I guess I'd say for me, I only know what I was told and the numbers were always. Um, moving. Is a good word to put it. Hence the reason you're here, so I can get a breakdown on what the hell's been going on.
How long ago was that interlocal?
Uh, the last round of the draft, I think, was submitted back to the county in April. Of this year, I can check.
The initial draft was submitted. On April.
April fifth, I would say.
So I have been dying for a. What was the number you were paying? What is the number you've agreed to pay? And what is the number that you aren't happy with? Because you're being charged and I never got a piece of paper that showed me those numbers.
Well. That's interesting, but the good news is it's been done. Uh, I think it was a memo the city submitted on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, to Commissioner Anderson, but you know, I think maybe our. Our assumption was this would be shared with the full commissioners, but that first memo did break down full case filings across the entities. And the history of what we've been paying and how it had been gathered. Um, and I will, I do just wanna recognize Jennifer. At the county, yes, sorry. I've only seen you on Zoom. It's so nice to be in person. Um, but she was really helpful and we spent quite a bit of time with her and Commissioner Anderson last fall, really going through kind of that data capture. Of trying to wrap heads around the different costs and how that was getting tabulated to come into full cost share. And so that memo that we then furnished in October was really focusing on what we thought needed to be the capture of cases. Because I think the most significant difference we saw from the beginning is the county is choosing to want to run numbers only on criminal cases. Not capturing all of the true work that's going through the court system. And so I think chief among the differences in that ordinance and the interlocals we have proposed, that's the main one. It's, um. Pretty clearly calling out in the ordinance that the commissioners adopted, only seeing criminal cases and not capturing across civil.
That's not how the ordinance was written as we understand it.
Uh, the second whereas, whereas Clickitack County maintains and operates two district court branches within its single district court district. In order to administer criminal justice in Clickitack County. And then the references below are only about paying that share. Deemed fair cost for said cases. But no specific call out of the breakdown, which in our proposed interlocal goes through a formula of what we would think would be fair for that cost share. And then, uh, what cases would go into that?
So our ordinance says exactly what that's gonna be and what gets included. And you have before, before you the copy of it that shows all the total case filings, which was, which is what we agreed to when we met with the. The, um, judges, judge, um, that says we're gonna take the whole number. We're gonna take your last three years. And then we're gonna take the expense of the budget as it's adopted. So the budget that we're getting ready to adopt. Um, and then that will come up with the number. So the only main difference in there is is that. Before you were only paying the judge's salary, now you're paying your, your fair share of all the costs to operate that. Which is exactly what, uh, I thought we'd agreed to when we were there.
Well, I wanna focus in on this. Difference between framing case count. Because repeatedly in multiple areas, the smart sheet, the way that they're capturing data and in this ordinance that I just read. The only mention is about criminal court cases, not the breadth of other work that is moving through a court. And the interlocal that we proposed breaks down. That full cost and how that should be discussed. So if there's an assumption that what is written here is being interpreted that way. Our preference would be for the language to match that interpretation. Right now it doesn't and that gives us. Concern because again, we will all leave and what's left are these agreements and they could get interpret. This could be interpreted by someone else to only be criminal cases. And we spend an extensive amount of time, you're right, over the last eighteen months in meetings and. Continued follow-up to try to reach an understanding of why that should be capturing all cases. And we thought, I agree with you that that's where we landed in the spring and it's also what we've continued to pay this year.
Okay, who drafted that? Was the prosecutor dropped that or?
So let me read this. It says, be it further resolved. That resolution is rescinded and that county code allocation of time is amended as follows. For municipality requesting judicial services from Clickitack County. From the purpose of facilitating the carrying out of criminal justice. The method for determining the annual charge shall be determined using the budget process for the upcoming year. The average percentage of the total court filings for the municipality over the previous three years, as reported to Washington State Courts of Limited Jurisdiction. Will be multiplied by the total expenses of the adopted budget for that district court in which the municipality receives services from. That's exactly as we had agreed to.
In the words, right?
Criminal justice. We're talking the functions of the judicial branch, the justice function, not just criminal. And so I do think that that sentence is still. Open for interpretation and not clearly spelling it out and it could just be a strike. And then I do think that the later mention in that same sentence of total is connecting back to an implication of all justice. But right now total's connecting back to criminal.
So with the simplest way that so we have clarity is since we haven't had the agreements, we make the agreements between the cities very clear about that. And we can leave the ordinance as a, as a stated. And then the, the agreements will take out any ambiguity.
Mayor Keith, if I may?
Yeah.
So in section two A compensation of the interlocal agreement that was drafted by myself and reviewed by the cities of Bingen and White Salmon. How it reads, what my understanding of what we can reach is as follows. Um, pro rodent, sorry. Are you taking a microphone? Okay, perfect. Cause I was gonna say I can't hear you.
Sorry, section two A calculation of percentage of use. The pro rod of share shall be an amount equal to, oh wait, go back up. Um, the parties have determined and do hereby agree that in return for facility usage and services of the district court. The city shall pay the county the city's pro rod of share of total costs and of salaries and benefits. Of the West District Court Judge and courtroom personnel. That does not include the entire budget of the court. There are, I'm sure, other costs that are figured into that. Additionally, the cities have no say over what budget you adopt for the court.
So that is why it says in there for the adopted upcoming budget, we've changed our budgeting timeline so that if you have. A disagreement or you think we're spending too much money on the courts, you are welcome to come in here and explain why you think the courts should be reduced. And that then your prorated share should be reduced. You know, we're also not including in there the actual cost of the building and the upkeep and all that, the overhead. We're, we're taking on that burden as well. For the entire piece. Um, and so when you look at our budget, um, for East District Court or for you for West District Court, we're just looking at that cost. Of providing those court services. When you look at those numbers, you're still getting the best deal you'll ever get.
Well, I, I think, uh, let's. Break that down because I don't think that our goal here is about deal making. We are entities tasked with providing certain services. To our residents and also the collection of their taxes for some of those services. City residents are paying the county. Directly. Hard stop. And then they also pay their city to provide some of those services. We are not interested, I don't think, in getting into. Your kitchen and telling you how to make all of your things. So the idea of us now adding to our plate. Coming here annually to go back and forth over the office costs. I like to trust that the management at the county is trusting their staff to be building the budgets that account for what they believe they need. I don't think you need extra people weighing in on that. So where we had landed was that the bulk of the costs and the accurate capture is definitely expanding from just a judge's salary. But to go back and think that. We need to continue to be paying for. Buildings or structures which all of our residents have already been paying for previously. Is to frame it in a way like we're still getting a good deal, I think is misleading. These are services we have to continue, you have to continue to provide. And the city is choosing to use this district court. And the city is choosing to use this district court system. In a way that serves our residents as well, but we're not looking to. Be taking a stance of having to fight to justify why. We're paying a valid share when our residents are already paying directly for all the other county services. Unless I start seeing a line item that says, here's the city residents county payments and it's only going over to these different areas. And you're coming to us, but in some ways you could say, my residents are paying twice for county services. With something like courts, if we're starting to take more from our city budget, where we're being paid by them to provide city services.
I'm gonna go back and have to pause this conversation because I'm still looking for the numbers of what you did pay. What this amendment says you're paying and what you're requesting to pay.
I have it.
I mean, if we're fighting over twenty bucks here, we shouldn't be fighting over.
Oh, no, we're not fighting over twenty bucks, Commissioner.
Are, are at.
Uh, just a second, I will pull it up. I also feel like I've been speaking a lot, so if somebody else has something they'd like to say.
This is last year.
So I have the history too, but yes, so quickly, just for twenty twenty-two. Benjen paid six thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and White Salmon paid fifteen thousand. For a total share on the west side to the West District Court of twenty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven. What we had verbally agreed to during the drafting of the inner locals and the terms specified therein. And what we have been paying on that promise has been a contribution by Benjen of twenty thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. And from White Salmon, twenty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars for a. Combined total of forty-four thousand sixty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. And I, I looked for a second.
Can I jump into Marla and just to answer Commissioner, Commissioner Christopher, uh, Christopher's question? Because it's based on we in our, in the ordinance that was drafted before that we agreed to. It was based on the previous caseloads. Um, so with the idea of, you know, a three-year average, in either case, we won't be able to accurately. Predict exactly what it will be in the future. I think that the idea is is that we're paying for what we're using. Um, and so we felt that was very equitable. So if, you know, Benjen has a lot of cases, then we have to pay more. And if we have fewer cases, then we have to pay less because we're impacting the court proportionately, right? So um, I think that.
I, I would argue that while that sounds true. The court still has to be there and somebody's still got to pay the judge's salary and somebody's still gotta. Turn the lights on to the building regardless on whether you have less cases in a year or Goldenale has less cases in a year. That overhead is still there. So, but do you have the Goldenale numbers for me?
Right, and the, and the overhead that the county pays is part of having the requirement to have this court. So you would pay that regardless if the cities opted to have their own court services. Those things are things that the county is required to do and that overhead is yours regardless of what the cities decide to do. So I think that's part of, you know, what, what Mar- uh, Mayor Kiefer was talking about was that. You know, there are certain costs that the court will have regardless of the city's participation. And as, you know, uh, me representing the city of Benjen, we have seven hundred and eighty residents. And so it seems unfair to require my residents to pay, pay taxes to the county that, for all these services. And then also ask for the cities to pay for the same services. Yes, so I think that that's where we're kind of butting heads a little bit in terms of understanding how to make this agreement work for all of us. Is that we want um, to pay for the time, like the, like the. The judge's salary that we're using for our specific cases. Um, and, and the, and the supporting staff. Um, but we don't want to be paying for the incidental things that the county would be paying for regardless. Because you, those are costs that you guys would have. Regardless of whether the cities were utilizing the judge's services.
If I may.
Sure.
If I may, okay, so when we look at this. Um, and we look at our budget for next year that we're gonna go, going out for. Our wages are two hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-five, our benefits are a hundred and four thousand. And so the only thing, and that's just wages and benefits. After that, the only thing that you would be paying your proportionate share on is the other services and charges, which includes. Office rentals and lease, which is part of your, the copier, some communications, some interpreter. Uh, any professional services if we had any. Um, and of a small amount of repairs and maintenance that add up to sixteen thousand dollars. So on a four hundred and two thousand dollar budget, sixteen thousand of it goes through the supplies and professional services and everything else. And I don't, I would, wouldn't think that you would have a hard, a difficult time paying. A proportionate share of that sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, in terms of equity, knowing that we, the county are still covering the building, the lights, the utilities, all that. All that's in a completely different budget that, that you get the benefit of while also not having to pay for it. But we, it's not how we split things out.
And I would also argue that we're paying the full share of probationary services and other things. That so far, we haven't even asked the cities to pitch in for, so.
Well, I think if I could interject, this is where I think our, the first issue before we jumped into trying to. Hash out how this needs to get revised is the process itself. We spent a significant amount of time, both ourselves as the mayors of our communities and our staff. Working over eighteen months across multiple meetings to come forward with what we thought was a fair proposal. Our understanding is the same thing was occurring within the county, that someone was reviewing this. That all of this same data was being reviewed by you ultimate decision makers. And that at some point we would engage and revisit the interlocal. So I'm sure you can understand, I would feel the same way if. Out of nowhere, it, you're reading in the paper, either the week after this occurred about equity for the cities and the court system. Or hearing after the fact that there was a public hearing, which no one gave us the courtesy of a heads up that it was occurring in that meeting. And that that was how the discussion would unfold. I'm wondering why we spent so much time over eighteen months to work in a collaborative way, as I understood it at the time. To get to a place where we would, this would have been a five-minute conversation. We would have all been reviewing it. We would have worked through what needed to be in the interlocal that we're all comfortable with and the ordinance would reflect it. And instead, this is messy and now it's taking extra time for all of us that I don't think is appropriate for your regular meetings. These meetings should be about the action that needs to come before you. And if we're gonna start diving in on picking apart how much of the contribution, we're going back eighteen months. And if we need to, fine, but I don't think that this is the forum. I think the forum needs to be with the appropriate staff, both at the counties and the cities. And then understanding when we are working with. Do we need to be working with the full board or working with a specific commissioner who's running point on this issue? But I hope you can understand, it's frustrating that it seems like much of the work that we've shared has not been. Seen, evaluated, reviewed, or feedback given to us. And so now we're taking further time on this issue that we. Went into our budgets, having adopted those numbers to give you guys an increase of fifty percent, contribute forty-four thousand this year. And now it feels like we're back to none of that being based on anything that was a shared agreement.
So if it was twenty-one thousand and now it's forty-four thousand, what are you saying that we have it as? I mean.
What's being proposed in the ordinance.
Okay.
Is setting out a way forward, which could be interpreted as one, only talking about criminal cases. Changing the formula capture completely, saying that it's an average of the prior three years, whether that's total cases or criminal is. Kind of open for interpretation, but that's a key point that's different. In the interlocal that we had drafted, we said annually, we would be evaluating what those case counts were. To do the appropriate formulation and figure out that percentage cost share. And a three-year approach based on average of cases and the whole collective of the budget for that court itself. Was not where we had landed. So to now have that be back on the table is fine. But then we would like to go through this in a more appropriate manner and we're not going to come to that resolution today.
Where do you think we landed?
Twenty minutes.
Where do you think we landed there other than your portion? On the average, based on the cost.
Well, we landed on an agreement. Well, what we had proposed and back in April when we asked for an update, we were told it was being reviewed and be going before. Go it, it, the interlocal that we had shared would be going before the commissioners. And there, the calculation on the percentage of usage, but also specifically what costs would be incurred. And we outlined the costs that we would be sharing and it wasn't the full capture of office expenses. If we need to go back to that, fine, this was just what we furnished. But we didn't get anything in return and now we're jumping ahead to an ordinance that's saying. Be it so, this is the way forward and that does not feel collaborative. Or as if you want to bring the cities to the table in a way where we land at something that does feel truly equitable.
I, I hear you. I feel your pain because I have the same pain. Being sensitive. I was unaware that the cities had any issues with what we were doing. Um, I'm now aware. Um, I think that there's. Uh, rather than sitting in here and debating, because I think Pat needs to be in the room too. He's the numbers guy on our end.
But we have a very different situation though.
I was gonna say, okay, then maybe before I respond, we, we let Goldenale speak for a minute and maybe you can.
I felt bad, like I was cutting people's legs off or something, but. When Commissioner Anderson came and presented it to the council, we had discussions with him and with the council members. And we've put it in our budget.
So you're understanding the correct amount?
We knew he had a great deal to start with and it was always a little uneasy to pay that little bit compared to what we knew the costs were. And that's why we accepted what Commissioner Anderson was proposing to us. We had a long discussion, Pat and I and council members. So we're, we are meeting what you're asking.
Okay, so if you guys did pay, let's say White Salmon, for instance, you did pay fifteen, we're asking you to pay twenty-three, three eighty-three. What are you guys proposing by your math it should be?
We are paying, we're currently paying that almost twenty-three thousand, twenty-two and change.
Your.
We are fine to pay that. If the formula lands as that being the cost share. And what makes us uneasy right now is that the ordinance as signed. And whatever that follow-up step is going to be, does not seem like a stage has been set where you were looking for our input. Or to continue to work through and refine or adopt the language that we proposed about that formula. And if this was to come forward, I, just in some of the conversation today. It seems like there's still some disagreement and that the formula does need to be revisited by the counties and the cities. But we are fine to pay, we are paying currently. Without an agreement in place, we shifted gears and we're paying that twenty-two and change. That we came to using the formulas that we proposed as a practice based on twenty-two to inform the twenty twenty-three cost share.
So your argument is not necessarily dollars, it's wording.
No, well, my argument is about process and then that in that process, what is. Brought forward as the official documentation and agreement captures accurately what to this point have been more verbal conversations. And is not reflected in the writing.
So your interlocal agreement doesn't match your ordinance.
Well, we don't have the interlocal agreement finalized yet because. What happened was is we lost our clerk of the board and some of those documents got missed. And that, that is why we ended up with the ordinance first, rather than the agreements first. That went through our um, legal side. And I thought that the, the way it was written, I, I can hear where you're coming from, thinking that. That we reneged on everything and we just looked at criminal justice. But we don't provide just criminal justice. We also provide all the other pieces that go into that court and we're looking at the entire court. And I think the easiest way to move forward from this is to make an apology that this, that this occurred, that you felt this way. That was, as you can see from what has been put forward for with, with the example. Is a very fair and equitable way of looking at it, using the entire amount of costs.
But if I could respond to that, and hopefully, I've never been told to speak up, so I think my voice is getting picked up. Can you hear me, Catherine?
If you can lean in towards the mic, that'd be better.
Okay, speak up. All right, that's once. What? We have the concern with in the manner in which the ordinance is written is missing an essential step. You, the county, would have to provide those services, pay the rent, keep the lights on, pay salaries and all. Regardless of whether or not we, the cities, were contracting with the county. We have the option to remove ourselves from going to West District Court and maintaining a separate municipal court. Therefore, that's why we believe it is necessary to tie our, our payments here. To the proportion of criminal cases, not the entirety of what is bringing, brought into the, the court.
Wait, so you want to go back to criminal? Because if so, I'll make that deal right now.
No, but I mean, it's, it, it's not, no, no, no. But here, and maybe I need to, to, there are certain costs, right, that the county's gonna have to pay anyway.
And you, you're right, because if we weren't providing services to both of you. We wouldn't have the, the judge's salary being that much of a full-time FTE. Everything would reduce if we were not paying that. Do you understand what I'm saying? Because you would have to go and hire that same judge to do your municipal court services. You would have to provide the clerk and everything else. And when we started this eighteen months ago, it was advice from our council. That you go out and try to figure out how much it would cost you to provide the services so that you can realize.
But this is the whole, so wait a second, because I think it would still be a full-time position. Because the total filings hover around ninety percent in the county. The cities are White Salmon in twenty twenty-one, four percent, fifty-three filings, Benjen, three percent, thirty-seven filings. So, okay, you could get away with somewhat of a reduction, but ninety-two percent of the filings, one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven. Were county cases. So we are a very small share. It's misleading to say that absent us, you could close up shop or have a part-time court.
Yeah, and I think a little change in words might help too. It's a professional services agreement. It's not a service agreement, it's a professional services agreement. And to tie that budget to the building and the electricity and our budgets is unfair. Because the taxpayers are already paying for that building.
I'm sorry.
And we're not doing that.
I, I, I can't go through this meeting without not, no offense. But feeling sorry for Goldenale for the amount of their rate increase when this county, through its policies. Causes Goldenale to be the way Goldenale is and now they get to pay more with less tax dollars.
We're gonna make you step away from the mic.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, okay, but.
We're not, but we're not charging you for any of that, okay? All of that stuff comes in a different part of our budget that does not, only in West District Court's budget. Is wages and salaries, personnel benefits and the supplies. And the supplies add up to sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars out of a four hundred thousand dollar budget. Okay? So what I would say is, is the way forward is in the MOA that we still have to finalize. We just make it very clear that it is based on that total portion of the overall cost of the four hundred and two thousand dollars. We take your last three-year average of the percentage, which will be about four percent for White Salmon. At four percent, say it's four percent for White Salmon. That would add up to sixteen thousand eighty-four dollars for next year. And that would be on the adopted budget, okay? When changes come through, because whether the judge's salary goes up and everything changes, it, it all moves together. And you'd be paying for it based on the adopted budget for that through, for that year. Well, on a rounded out average, and that's what we've always talked about. There's nothing in here that we haven't talked about.
Well, no, there is still a bait and switch because now going with that approach, we are being pulled along. To something that was not landed upon through compromise. We are now being pulled into an agreement about a three-year average. I'm not interested in nickel and diming right now, whether the portion sixteen thousand is office supplies or not, it's the principle. If we move forward in that direction, this is why the ordinance is so frustrating. Because by doing it, you changed the game, you laid a new stage. And now, because this ordinance exists, you say this is the stage we have to play on. And that is maybe something that the cities are not on board with. Because we spent eighteen months through many meetings, which I felt were positive. And moving towards a direction of what seemed to be a different approach. Where my expectation is that when we finally came before you, we would be done by now. It would have been five minutes because we would have. It would have been five minutes because we would have both and all entities seen the drafts, reviewed them, weighed in and agreed to terms. But now we're being forced to go along with your terms and find a way to still leverage the little bit we can instead of starting with a clean slate.
We didn't always agree on the three-year average. That's how it was always been in the past. The three-year average is all, was always there. That's how we did it with the judicial service. That's how we did it when it was just the judge's salary.
So Commissioner Anderson, did, who wrote, like, who wrote the ordinance? Because we had, I guess I'm just curious why the cities weren't informed that there were going to be changes that deviated from the draft that we sent back to the commissioners. So I guess I'm just curious how that, got, how, how it was missed that we weren't notified that there were going to be changes.
Yeah, I don't know anything about it, other than when it showed up on my desk and it said, you guys had all agreed to this, here, sign this. That's pretty much what I got, so this all new to me.
So the only, the only difference I think is, is that one of the inter-locals called out each one of, you know, when we look at that sheet that shows all of the court cases and that whole list of things, one of them called out every one of those. And that's, that's exactly what we're doing based on the draft, and that's what it was meant to say. If we need to go back and change the ordinance so that it says more than criminal, it says criminal and civil is part of that, we can do that. We can, or we can leave the ordinance as is and do it in the MOA so that we can make sure that it's very crystal clear for you. That was never the intent when this was drafted, to go back to just criminal. We'd gotten past that during our meeting in Benjen.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, I'm gonna step down as chair for a minute. Right by numbers.
If you have an inter-local agreement that goes against the ordinance that was adopted, which one takes precedence when it comes to enforcement?
Well, the, it wouldn't go against it, it's just making it more clear. This isn't, the way that this is written, it was taking the overall cost. It just says criminal court because that's what it's called to us. It's, it's your East District Court, your criminal court. And so if our ordinance is pretty clear on that, that it's taking all the cases, not just criminal in the inter-local agreement, you have to follow that agreement.
Okay, but, well, Commissioner Anderson, when we agreed to pay, uh, the share of, um, based on our, based on our utilization, that didn't, didn't encompass the full, full court budget. Um, I think that that, that terminology is something that, at least our, our city takes issue with. And so when that was elected to be changed within the ordinance, I guess, why didn't, why didn't anyone tell us that they, that you guys wanted to change that language? Because I think it will affect, it definitely, we would want to make sure that it's in the, um, agreement, that it, um, I guess we still have some more negotiations to do. But I guess, um, I'm confused why, when the language was written up, the cities weren't notified because it wasn't what we had agreed, agreed to. So did you write it or did the clerk that left write it? Like, I guess I'm, I'm just trying to understand how this got bottled.
When we were in Benjen, I thought we agreed that it would be the West District Court costs, the total costs. And that's how it was gonna go. I, I never said that it was just the personal, the, the wages and benefits and nothing else.
Yeah, but you saw the agreement that we sent to you that very specifically outlines how we're gonna calculate the costs and it very specifically calls out the judge's salary and supporting personnel. It doesn't say anything about pencils and paper and what are ancillary items. And so I think that by changing the language that was presented and agreed upon, or maybe it wasn't agreed upon, maybe you always thought that it should, it should be this way, and so you just went with it. But I think that that piece, we didn't know that you guys were gonna do that. And so we didn't come and talk to you guys before you passed the ordinance. And so now we're asking you to either resend that or modify it, um, or that we have to be a lot more clear in the inter-local agreement aspect of it.
Well, I would say, sure, uh, the difference is for the, your portion of the supply, since we're talking about equity here, would be six hundred and seventy-four dollars for the year for the City of White Salmon. It would be a little bit less than that for our Benjen. Um, and if you would like us to rewrite the ordinance over the six hundred dollars, that is, that is four percent, say, say it's averaged out at four percent. The, we have the wages and benefits that they don't want to disagree with. But now it comes down to the supplies, which of course, a portion of the supplies are being used by the district, by the cities. And so at four percent of that sixteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, work out to six hundred and seventy-four dollars in a year.
I think, again, we keep getting rerouted to a different conversation. The issue about the ordinance and why I keep coming back to it, you, it changed your code. So something does need to get revised there. Either a new ordinance that has a change to the code that addresses these issues with this one, which is clearly saying only criminal justice. And then secondly, the conversation about dollars and cents and working through all of that, this isn't the right forum. That forum is with staff and with some of the electeds, but not, clearly, we're still workshopping something. Something is not ready to come to you for acceptance or for the cities to sign off on. And we're not gonna sit here and sign off on off-the-wall math. So I just think for the purpose of the action items for today, in my mind, is how do we resolve? Or what is the best way forward with the resolution that was passed? How do we handle, how is that handled in a way that captures, I think, everyone's desire? And then what is the best next step for working through a draft in our local? Does the county want to furnish one and we provide feedback? Or do we go back to the city furnished ones? And how does that need to work its way through so that we can come back before the board with something that's close, ready for adoption?
And I, I have to agree, I'm sorry, and I have to apologize for where we're at today. Um, when it came through our desk, um, Mr. Christopher and I signed what was presented to us as officially done business. And, and I apologize for that, and I'm embarrassed about it. And I can see what you're saying today about get the process set first because once we set this process too, that's not just this year, it's every year that those are gonna cover. If you don't have that paperwork right, we don't have anything.
So what we can do is we can send you the MOA that the prosecutor had added language in for the indemnification of the county over that document. And we can send you exactly how it's written because the MOA actually spells that out more clearly with what you guys put in there is all the different court cost numbers. And, and I'll be the first to say that the MOA likely should have came first. The rescension of the way we were doing it was the first thing to do. Then the MOAs, and then you write the county code. We did have a complete changeover in staff and a lot of things got lost. And unlike the cities, the county, we don't have an administrator like the cities. We don't have staff that does that. We act as, in essence, the county administrators, only one-third of a head. And the thirds don't always see eye to eye and don't always understand what the other pieces of the head are thinking. But I think what we are is, is we've, we're pretty much in agreement, we've always been in agreement. I'm very sorry that it said criminal in there and that you got in, in your idea that we were just talking about criminal cases like we had been eighteen months ago. You know, we were way past that when we had our meeting with the judge and the judge was there. And we had no intent, and this is not designed to go back to that. And you can see that with what we'd worked out there. So I apologize for that confusion. And to me, it's always been the criminal justice system, the criminal, it wasn't just based on criminal cases. And the MOA didn't say that. So we will get that to you as soon as possible. If you would like to amend it so that you don't pay for this, any of the supplies or your portion of the supplies, I'm sure we can agree to that at six hundred dollars. We've already spent more than that with our time right here with staff.
I think just, I, I think again, it's, yeah, I think it's, uh, I appreciate that follow-up, thank you. I think that really the discussion point is just about what that formula is and that that's the work that now needs to be worked through. And in that meeting, they can get into the weeds on the different line items. But it's really just about the accurate capture of the calculation for percentage of use and that, the costs that are allocated.
So do you have a document with your wordage that you can provide to us? Or are you willing to accept the document that we passed and edit the wording that you have a problem with and resubmit it to us for changes? Of the wording that would make you happy?
Well, I think, uh, on the wording, we don't have a document furnished, but just, you know, again, that portion, your, your county code one dot sixteen dot zero nine zero, yes, there's a desire to change. So if that's just a future amendment you guys do to what you passed or ordinance, that checks that item off. And then I think for the MOA, I, I think we're open for where we want to pick up with that. We obviously drafted in our locals, that can be where we pull back up. Or if something was drafted and it's already made its way through county review and we just need to see it, it sounds like that might be the case, then yeah, we will see that and move from there. It sounds like that might be further along if it got reviewed.
I have the drafts that we sent with me if you'd like them.
Anything you got, I'd be happy to look at it.
I think the cities only, we only drafted it because it sounded like the county staff was stressed and overtaxed. And so we knew that this was, we were operating without an actual agreement in place. And so we took the initiative and just did it ourselves, um, and modeled it after. Krista, you modeled it after, do you remember which city you did? Anyway, we, we just, we just, uh, used some, uh, an existing municipality, uh, county agreement for these services as an example.
Not to throw fuel on a fire, but would you guys mind just if we, in the MOA, we include in their probationary services so we don't have to go through this conversation again?
Oh, there's some fuel, um.
If I may?
I don't know. Yep.
In the meeting on March ninth between myself, Mayor Keywit, Mayor Keathler, uh, Judge Baker and Commissioner Anderson, um, we discussed, uh, this proposal. Um, and we talked in that meeting about how probationary services need to be a separate conversation under another agreement. And Mayor Keathler, at that time, um, you stated the same thing that you said earlier, that your residents pay the county and the city, um, and how we would explain that back to people. So basically, it's, it's, at that time, your comment was that it was another, um, like double tax from my notes at that meeting.
So I, for my clarification, I don't understand city government very well. Your city taxpayers that live inside your city are paying you for court services and probationary services?
Wow.
They're paying us for court services?
Let's do a, I love this one oh one, here we go, buckle up. So white salmon, if you were to move into our city, your property tax bill, you would be paying seventy-six cents per thousand to the city for their operations. And you'd be paying a dollar and ten cents to Clickatatt County for Clickatatt County operations. So in twenty-twenty-three, Clickatatt County will receive six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty-four cents to fund county services. The city from those same residents will receive four hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars to fund city services. So certainly, as the lowest property tax rate of the cities and the county in Clickatatt, we are protective of making sure that the dollars we're getting to run the city are going to the city services that they need to go to. And then certainly more, uh, intentional in reviewing those costs that we might be paying to the county, just to make sure that there's not a situation of, uh, our residents in some ways, our dollars that they're sending for us to provide city services getting redirected over to an agency that they're already paying more for.
So. So in short, the answer is yes, they're paying you to provide these services.
Uh, they're paying us to provide city services, absolutely. But I guess the question back, I would say, is if now a portion of our four hundred and thirty-five needs to get siphoned off for some of these other county services, please tell me what the services are that the six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars from city residents go to. How is that line item in the county budget protected so that none of those dollars are going to any of these other areas where now you're asking my city to pay for them? Because my residents shouldn't pay twice. So what is the benefit they're gonna see when I pick up that cost? What is their, their get? A pool?
That's outside city limits.
Well, okay. Now you move into Western Clickatatt. A third of all the property tax dollars received by this county are coming from the residents of that metropolitan park district. So the west side is paying one point seven million of the five point four that's coming into the county for all their services.
Man, where is the majority of the landfill funds going? Where are the majority of the property taxes from green energy that are all over here going?
I don't know, tell me, I just gave you my answers.
I'll have to draw the map for you, but I guarantee you, there, there, the money's made over here and spent over there.
To get back, to get back on track, I think the easiest way to explain that is per RCW, you are required to provide municipal court services within, for municipal court purposes within the city. If you were to do that, you would have to have your own judge. And this is what you're required by RCW, you'd have to have your own judge, you know, you're already paying for your prosecutor. All that other stuff, you would have to provide that. If your judge were to give someone probation, you would have to have a probation department as well because those are city services. Because that is your city that is, that is doing that. So it's not double taxation. One, your resident drives out of the city onto the county drug, to the county roads and gets pulled over and goes through West District Court as a county resident and has to, and you know, we all know it doesn't make us any money, it costs us money to do this. That's where your portion of the county taxes are going when you drive onto the county.
Well, I think I would just say to this conversation, we're all here representing many of the same people. And so how we best provide services and what that distribution is across our different entities, because certainly there are services the cities are providing to our residents that are not provided by the county. We should be complementing each other so that the experience of living in Clickatatt is of value and rewarding and encourages people to come here or make sure that they stay here. I think that's everyone's goal. And so my interest here is whether it's about courts or, and I think to follow up on your question where we went down this tangent, yes, I think we need to have a separate discussion and keep probation separate at this point. But let's get these things in place and make sure that we're capturing the agreements and there's a record established of how we're gonna pay. My interest is probably the same as yours. You want a fair cost on the services you're providing, so do I. All I think is that we need a couple more meetings to get the court's agreement figured out. I think based on this conversation, it would be beneficial to keep probation separate, but let's move on that. We've definitely been talking about it and the cities have been in agreement that we want to engage with the county and figure out what probationary services, what that cost share could be. So there's no dissension of, we're not interested in coming to the table and writing maybe things that were not the best capture of costs over time. But I think I would like that we set a tone that we all succeed when the cities are strong and the county is strong. And doing that requires us to be working together and seeing the same north star. So I'm not trying to see a different star of like protecting my dollars. I'm protecting city dollars to make sure they're going to the places they need to go to as city dollars and that those county dollars coming from city residents are going where they need to go for county funds or spending.
Right.
Where are people's speed, hopefully there are.
My thinking is I'm looking at the county and the budget for the county as a whole. And I'm trying to get people out of their silos or their soapboxes that they're only focused on their little department or their little elected office or their little city. I want you to have care and compassion for his city and him and have care and compassion for your. I want you to have caring compassion for his city and him and have caring compassion for your city. I want you both to help each other and us to help both of you and everybody get better. And so to me, yes, that's through conversation. That's through changing the wording to what you need the wording and that's fine. It isn't over an argument over six hundred dollars. But, but the only way this county gets forward is if everybody loses. Their me, me, me mentality and starts going after a Click Attack County mentality. Um, and it, I don't know that we'll ever get there, but that's my goal to get there. My speeches are. Sorry for my vent. Spend one of those days. Um, I do want to. Parrot Commissioner Zoller that I'm sorry that we're even having this discussion. Uh, it was unaware to us that there was any issues. Uh, like I said, it was. We were under the opinion that the other negotiation was over and everybody was happy and that maybe we just did. Paperwork B before we did paperwork A. Not that there was any kind of a. Um, but if there is a kerfluffle in there somewhere, let's get it figured out. Let's get it fixed. Let's get it handled. Let's work together as community and improve everybody. Uh, is where I'm going. So.
And I, I would just like to, to say again, I'm, I'm sorry that, you know, the way it was written. And I'm sorry that it went first. That was not our, our intention. That's not how we operate as a county. I thought we were all in agreement in terms of those costs, the three years back and it being equitable across everyone. Because what it does is, is as long as you continue using those services. You are saving the taxpayers of your cities a bunch of money from not having to provide those services yourselves. And you get to take those tax dollars and use them for the other good, important projects that you want to do. And the county has always been in favor of. Working together so that we can save the taxpayers. I know where your city budgets are going to be in the next few years. And I know where the county budget's going to be in the next few years and we all need to work together. The cities have had a really good deal for a long time. Um, it has been subsidized for a long time and we've been happy to do it. This, the county is moving into a different phase where the, the landfill is not the golden goose that it once was. In fact, the landfill dollars are going down right now. Um, and so that's changed how, how much we can subsidize all of our friends and our neighbors. And it's just a sad, sad state of affairs. Um, I hope that this shouldn't take more than one more, uh, email, uh, with an MOU to you. That has exactly all the things very clearly lined out in the, the, the key. How much you pay, you know, the whereas is one thing. Uh, but in the MOU, it really comes down to how much you pay and how's that work out? And I think we are on the same page. The only decision would be is whether or not supplies are included or not. And if you don't want them in there, it's six hundred dollars. Um, I don't care. I, he might care, but I don't care.
We'll keep the suspense. Keep you on your.
Okay. Well, what I was, what I'll send you is.
See how much of a partner you want to be with the county.
But that's, I mean, that's where it comes down to. In the three years is how it's always been calculated. And the reason and rationale behind that was is because you have ebbs and flows. And if you have one huge year, we don't want to see, say, say something goes on in White Salmon. You have a new chief who has a different attitude. And then all of a sudden your court costs are going to go from, say, fifteen thousand up to forty thousand. Because you have someone wrote, wrote a bunch of tickets. Well, but the three-year average, it helps ensure that your guys' budget will, will, won't do this. Go straight up and down and that's that averaging method. And in terms of using the budget and, you know, the next year's adopted budget, absolutely. It gives you guys a chance. Cause remember this budget, while we are setting it, it's another elected official's budget. And we all have to be a part of that conversation.
Um, have you guys ever been provided a copy of, um, West District Court's budget? And East District Court's budget? So you can see what the numbers are and what the dollars are. How much is pens and paper and pencils? And Jen, can we get that facilitated? Yep. Can you just shoot them an email of a copy and so it's quick and easy and they can see how much? And where the money's going?
I know we're coming up on an hour. Um, can we just do a quick recap on what the next steps are? I, it sounds to me like, um, we're going to use the. Interlocal agreement that the city's provided and then the county is going to edit that and then send it back to us.
The, the county has already edited. We're going to get it sent over to you. Um, and make sure that it captures this conversation, but we can't just use yours because. Our PA put in a bunch of other terms in terms of indemnity.
Okay. So will we get that then this week or today or tomorrow?
You'll get it this week.
Okay.
Good. Mr. Zoller?
I'd like to have a copy of that too.
Yeah, same.
Thank you for being willing to have a conversation about probation. That is going to be Commissioner Christopher.
Come on down.
Thanks for your. I don't know. You're going to be in a room with me, huh? You're going to bring a lawyer or referee?
Oh, no.
Be like an MMA match.
We charge, I don't, I don't want to pay for that. Please to start. Uh, thank you all. I mean, again.
Fine.
I, we understand there's a lot of different things moving at the same time and I just want to reinforce. For eighteen months, we were having good, productive, collaborative conversations. And so the outlier was this single document. We're ready to just keep moving forward and keep the momentum that we thought we had established and get this figured out. And probationary services definitely, uh, looking forward. I don't know if I should say that. But welcoming the chance to start those conversations. We're not shying away from the engagement. We just want to, you know, protect our. What we're.
Lori might want to get into probationary services.
True.
We'll have that debate and send somebody your way. Um, send us the language and whatnot. If there's any other issues that come up. Um, keep us all informed. On the future of this project, please, mayors. Okay. Okay. Uh, if there, nobody has anything else on that topic, we will move on.
Thank you.
Move on.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm already late for my next meeting.
Are you?
What's next?
Oh, yeah.
As I say, we still got paperwork to sign.
Here, there's one. He needs to switch you.
I think you should, I might just take up. For the negotiated probationary. It'd be fun. Enjoy. More to work like I need another hole in the head, but then again, so do you.
Sure.
Water conservancy board and everything else.
Um. I think you'd enjoy working with Mayor Marlon.
I, I'll be fine. It'll, I'm just fine.
I know you will.
We're, we're two alpha types that will sit together at a table and go, you know what? I respect your opinion. And we'll come to an answer. We'll be done in an hour and a half. Mark my words.
And I thought I did that too. Uh, I thought I did that too. I get it. I mean, the way. It was written where it says criminal and being that's where we start.
Is this the old document that just got copied and pasted or is it a whole rewrite?
Rewrote it originally.
Excuse me.
Lee.
Oh, Lee.
And it was just, you know, it's the criminal court system. It's not based on criminal court cases. It was total court filings. All right. Okay. Are you ready?
Um, sure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn noting that we will be in nine AM on Thursday.
And I will second.
Um, okay. We have motion to second in discussion. The only other thing that I had that I was going to mention is would it help you at all? And think about it, consider it when you wanted to do your Mondays and we said we don't have any Mondays. If potentially starting at nine o'clock for these meetings might give you an hour of whatever you may need to get through the day, let us know.
That isn't my, that, that isn't my problem. My problem is situations like this. That if we don't have our workshops and can't be on board, having discussions with all three of us. Instead of having something presented to us in a five minutes.
Yeah.
Look at it here for so many days. How many things can you check? If you can't workshop it through and finite it across your teeth and dot your i's. I don't ever want another document to come to me that's a mouse. Twice this week.
What's the other one?
The short.
The short.
The short subdivision. There were complaints about subdivision and questions. And if we had workshops, staff comes in, we work those things through on the Mondays. We would be able to fine tune things.
With those questions.
I'm in bridge meetings Mondays.
Would those, would those questions have come in?
Yeah.
On Monday before we approved it on Tuesday, or did they only know about it after? Did the public actually look at the agenda and have those?
No.
Would have raised those questions to you to even ask on Monday?
Oh, I'm not talking about the public. I'm talking about being able to work together as commissioners and ask each other's.
Right. I'm just, I'm talking about the subdivision.
Yeah.
Would the questions or concerns you had on the subdivision even?
It all comes down to our direction and policy for staff. And it's just like I've said over and over, working with Jeff from Public Works is great. He comes in, he brings his lists.
Okay.
We, do you need an agenda?
No.
Um.
No, we're still in discussion for.
We, we need those times with each department and we need those times with each crucial document so that we don't look foolish. Because that's what's happening. And I'm really not wanting to put my signature on much of anything anymore until I can qualify them. Because we're, we, our working order is so out of order. And I believe watching things that went on with this county for the past. I'm not going to say how many years, um. We've just digressed into this. We've just digressed into this working order of slam it through. And then we're either putting out fires or getting in trouble.
Uh, disagree with that.
I, bringing up the, the long plat.
Mm-hmm.
We may have individuals that are mad about it or upset. But we have staff that followed the law and followed process and procedures. Cause they signed off on it saying that it was done and that the person had provided what they needed to provide. And so we will never catch those things because unless you know every single thing about it. And you're looking into agreements that are outside the bounds of what we can actually do that are civil matters. We can't get involved with those civil matters. So there's nothing that we can do.
That's my question.
We're not spending enough time on.
That's my problem on the subdivision is, okay, I didn't know there was any public issues with road agreements on the subdivision. Our departments didn't know there was any issues. So technically, if we'd have talked about it on a Monday, to me, we wouldn't have had anything to talk about unless. The residents who did know brought them to your attention before the Monday. If they didn't know it was even a situation until Tuesday, Monday wouldn't have got us anywhere because none of us would have known.
Or perhaps knowing that subdivision, because we've talked with staff about it. And we've worked our way through that application with staff, knowing what the applications are. We would have known all along there was a problem, but we would have known that staff took care of it. We didn't even know that was there. By the time that came to Dan and I, we'd never seen it before. And to digest that with everything else in the packet and not be able to have fifteen minutes with staff to say, what else is there? I mean, how, I can change up my working order, I guess, and tie up staff when they bring it in and start asking these questions. What was controversial during this short plat during that time? If you want to do, do it in a public session, then I can do it then.
Well, either.
And then we can work till six o'clock.
It has to be in.
I know it's a public session, but it's not the same.
Meet with them individually.
It's not on Zoom. It's a workshop and we have more time, just like we do on Thursdays. We have more time to look at these things. There's administrative things within the bills we should be looking at closer and discussing. It shouldn't just be this flash in the pan that runs through here. And we take our time outside of every other board we're on and everything else we're doing. And then all the fires that are burning and we have our regular stuff coming through that we just smash it right through. It's just not a good look as commissioners.
Let, we keep jumping from topic to topic to topic to topic. Let's break to the subdivision question.
I'm twenty-five minutes late.
But we can stop.
Okay.
But you guys can keep, could keep the conversation going, make, figure it out.
Did, is it known that our staff knew there were issues with the subdivision?
They've been hearing about it. I went back and asked about it after the fact and they've been hearing about it through the whole subdivision debacle. And.
And they just didn't tell us about it?
No, we don't hear about any of these. There's other counties where right now, because we've never designed a direction or policy for our planning department. There is, um, pre-ops that come in. And they're handled there. The decisions are made there independently and then they move wherever they move. In other counties, a pre-op actually comes to the commissioners and is posted in the newspaper that there was a pre-op. So the conversations start early.
I think the question comes into.
We're just blindsided.
It, yes, but I think. Part of that may have been intentional by past commissioners giving directors directive.
Part of it.
To give them plausible deniability.
Part of it.
If I don't know about it, I don't have an issue.
Some of it becomes.
It's to us. Policy decision to tell our directors if there's issues.
Right.
With a plot or a permit or a subdivision, we need to know about it before it crosses our desk.
Yes.
And then hold them responsible for not notifying us.
We had one earlier in the year that I was really upset about and I had told them one week, wait a minute, I can't vote on this. I haven't seen the documents. I didn't see anything. Please don't ever bring me anything unless I see the documents and stuff with it. Um, so they came back the next week with the documents and then something came out of that one that was problems. It was like, wait, no, I can't sign this. We have to work our way through something. We're not getting the full picture of everything, not just that department, but all over the board. And then we're told things.
The problem is, is when there's issues like on that subdivision. That if there was issues that nobody told me about. Um, so I look at it and just say, okay, health has no, nobody, none of these departments have issues. And there is public issues out there. The general public gets a feeling. That we ramrodded through somebody's permit because of their last name and are giving those special favors.
Yes.
So, but for us to fix that, I think that's a.
It's not going to be.
It's a policy decision that we need to educate our directors.
And that's.
We need to know the issues.
That goes back again to harping about strategic planning, about knowing who we are as a board and what our authority is. And the departments have all gotten used to just working independent and getting it done. And the thought was from the beginning when I came in, well, we hire competent people. We let them work and if things go bad, then we get in the middle of it. You know, you're putting out fires and legally under law, it is your job to be the director and the policy setter. And then establish a relationship with which department you're working with, what you need to see from them and how you need to work.
And I agree with you and I pushed for that for two years and couldn't get it. Because we hire our directors and we have to trust our directors. It's just ultimate blind trust and no management at all. And so, yes, we need to work towards. Management without hopefully micromanage.
Correct. And establish a trust relationship with them. So they understand what we want. So they don't feel under burden because somebody, one person's telling them what to do. Another person's telling them what to.
I think it has to come down to transparency to the public.
Yep.
Because even if there is potential issues with somebody's subdivision or whatever. Are they really going to want to talk about it in front of a microphone with Zoom? No, they won't talk about it in a room in there. And that doesn't benefit the public. So we just need to, again, policy decision mandate. No, you have to sit right there and talk about it. We have to talk about all the tough decisions. Whether it's a subdivision, whether it's Dallas Port Wastewater Treatment Center.
Right.
Whether it's PUD, whether whoever it is, it's right there during a Zoom meeting, not on a Thursday or in a private office. And some of our directors, we're going to have to push a little harder.
Well, and I've been trying to get a resolution done that's a policy resolution that we can agree upon. And adopt as a board of who we are as a board and how we work with our directors. And then beyond that, then we take each department and write how we want to work with them. And we present it to them and say, this is what the board's decided and this is what you can expect from us from now on.
Right.
So they have continuity. They feel comfortable with their job. They know what to provide to us, when to provide it. And we know we're going to get the qualified information to sign something that we don't look stupid.
That's, that's my hope is that as we get out of budget and we free up workshop time, we start. That's that's my hope is that as we get out of budget and we free up workshop time, we start getting. More detailed department updates that have all of the problems.
And that's why I keep asking for more workshop days. Our work, our day on Tuesdays taken up, our day on Thursday now is filling. You see how we finally got Thursdays and we're filling it. Now we'll get the agenda earlier on Wednesdays, so that can help ask questions on Thursdays. But what if now we did have Mondays and we could do extra things?
Mondays, Mondays are super, super hard for me because of all the other.
Then Wednesdays or Fridays if we.
Wednesdays, Fridays work, Wednesdays are great.
Here Elise is like, no, no, no.
But.
And I don't consider all the consequences. I'm just saying.
I will not.
We need to be able to work.
To add a third day where staff has to be in the room until we fill up the two days we currently have. And that means including the day, we didn't start until ten o'clock. If that means we start at eight thirty, we start at eight thirty. Let's get some work done. If that means we don't quit until four thirty, so they have time to do things, that's fine. Make it make Tuesday a longer day. And make Thursday a longer day before we go into the third day.
Okay, I'm good.
Because to me, it's like you get the Thursday workshops and we're done at noon and now we're gonna have a Wednesday workshop, too.
But I think.
Until we can fill it up, let's worry about filling up what we got. And then and then branch out. That's all I'm asking. And then if we need to add more days, then I'm all I'll look with you on it. But I need to see that the days we currently have are filled up and not hour and a half and we'll get lunch.
And I'm gonna try really hard to get that a draft resolution done for this Thursday. So you can tweak it too and we can tweak it and uh Jake can look at it and then.
I think going forward.
How we work.
Half of the day workshop. Just literally hours of open discussion of this type of stuff on how we are going to do for. Policy-wise directing staff and that gets into. Updates and questions and how is your training and how is your, you know? Uh, I mean, literally going in and managing from a board here so we don't have just one commissioner. Is my fear that's going in and managing or micromanaging a department the way they want it. And not the way the board wants it done. That's my fear that we need to do it from this diocese. Right there, even if it's zoomed. Uh, because I worry about individual efforts. And I wanna make sure that doesn't happen.
Well, and just. A good job for our employees to, the continuity of knowing what they need to be providing and what they need to be doing. I like to know what I'm doing when I go to work, so I hope that to provide that to them too.
I know what I plan to be doing when I go to work and then it always gets rerouted and then I get to work. Okay. Yeah, no, I think we're on the same page. It's just how to get there.
Are you staying out?
Well, I'm sure if we ask, if we actually ask most of the directors, they would say, please stay out of my department.
No, I've had them please say, help me. I honestly have. And I've had them say, thank you so much for sticking up for us. Thank you for trying.
Yeah.
I'm serious. It's it's.
Okay, good. I that encourages.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because again, I don't wanna get in there and. Micromanage them or have commissioners sitting in their weekly meetings, which is happening that we need to put a stop to. Um.
Well, and some are very functional and working within their realm and you never hear much out of their departments and. Uh, they have very happy employees.
It's just like, let's let's use economic development just because it's a guinea pig in the room. So much for two years. I didn't know a damn thing about it. I couldn't get answers. I couldn't get answers in here. I couldn't get answers in there. We need to make it that the answers are given right here in front of a hot mic because technically, if you can't talk about it in front of a hot mic, the general public probably doesn't want you working on it. So if that means we zoom every meeting, fine.
If you can't.
If that means we're we're not allowed to talk about it in our office, it it comes right here because. Again, I wanna know about everything all the time and if there's projects or, you know, water transfers or something that are being. Negotiate legislation, state legislation being written for two years that I didn't know about. Um, hmm. Yeah, we probably that that needs to be right here and that's us holding them accountable to doing it right there in front of the mic. And not necessarily on a Thursday workshop when nobody's listening. Um, we need to be more transparent. If we're more transparent, there's less likelihood. Of some sneaky stuff finding its way through.
Well, and and it to me, too, it comes down to what's legal. You know, if you have something developed within our board and all of a sudden it's moving over somewhere else and. One or two of your county commissioners didn't know anything about it, that doesn't make it legal. We're a board of three. We have to have that consensus.
Well, and I think we need to have a consensus on who's championing a project. And working on a project before they champion the project. I mean, I'm finding out as we go that.
Oh, you remind me of so many things I have to do.
I need to now go down and talk to economic development about this broadband thing. Like who the hell put Jake in charge of championing the broadband thing? Might be good, maybe bad. I don't know.
Well, I think part of that came from because he's always worked on it even before he became a commissioner. He was in an economic development.
But my question is if it's not done in this room in front of this board, is it being done in accordance with the board's wishes? That's the problem.
Well, and that that's another thing. If we do our policy of how we're gonna work with our departments and we have those departments come in and define it. Then we'll be there.
We can hold them responsible, but we can't hold the commissioner responsible.
No, but then they know they need to come tell us all.
Kinda like the fair improvements. If I went down there and pressured Jeff to put those fair improvements on there. I'm acting against the board because I never got consensus to do such a thing. And I welcome both of you to go ask Jeff if I did, because I surely I'll never talk to him about it other than sitting right here at this bench after the devil's.
And and it's a learning curve.
That no other commissioner is out trying to push their own.
Well, and it is. It's a new learning curve and everybody has to learn to operate that way and do it correctly. And if we do it now, too, we leave behind a better board. You'll have policy set. You'll have your departments functioning and if I die tomorrow, maybe. It'd be okay.
That's part of my whole thing of. Making policy, setting it memorialized in policy so the next board can't report back to the way it was.
Or take them a while to do it.
I mean, this meeting right here, I would love to have this meeting sitting right here on a Tuesday with the microphone.
And you could ask for that.
Oh, it never happened.
Well, then it wouldn't happen. It wouldn't have a meeting then.
Yeah, but we're the ones who want money, so then we don't get the meeting. I'm aware. I very rarely say anything I don't need. Um, people may not like my answer. They may think I'm too abrupt. Um, but um. Usually there are thoughts that people are afraid to mention themselves even though they're very widely thought. And I'm the only one with courage enough to say.
So I I'll try to get that draft resolution done so we can start moving. I keep trying to get to and every see another fire starts and I don't get to it, but I'll try to get it for Wednesday or Thursday's workshop.
If not, throw it on the next Thursday's workshop.
Doing that. I keep doing that.
Keep adding to the that Thursday? Hey, whatever. And that's my point.
No, I keep moving it. I keep moving.
If we need to start things at nine, we start them at nine. If we go until four, I really don't wanna go past at least four thirty.
No, and I'd like to wrap up today so our staff can get done. I know they have work to do in there.
I said, I don't wanna go past four thirty.
No, I agree.
Um, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion to adjourn? Hearing none, uh, all of us in favor of adjourned the regular meeting until nine o'clock on Thursday, September fourteenth for our scheduled workshop. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Let the record show that there was only two of us for that motion, but yeah.